I am happy to be here. 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 I am happy to be here.
All help Biafra! All help Biafra! All protocol duly observed and properly executed. Big one, no, I ain't no liar. I ain't no liar, big one. I'm no Biafra, I ain't no liar. Me are you joy and for that. Yeah, I can't get to him now. Do you want me to connect it up?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of indigenous people of Biafra, all the people of Biafra, Canadians. All the people of Biafra. I P O B. All family. I P O B. All family. I P O B. All family. One family. I P O B. I wish to welcome the supreme leader, the indigenous people of Biafra. Mazzi, now they can welcome you. Your people are here to receive you. I want to tell you that within the people seated right here to listen to you are chiefs, dinzers, the chiefs, fathers, mothers, children, grandchildren. I neke neke, you're very much welcome. I want to talk to you today about the journey so far, and the misconception, and the invidos, and the stories behind the I P O B. Seven years ago, not long ago, I'm not sure how many people here are born Biafrans, or how many people here are born Nigerians. But majority of the members of indigenous people of Biafra, I can tell you are mainly Nigerians. They didn't say they're Biafran war. They were all born Nigerians. But today, they championing the restoration of the Republic of Biafra. The reason why this younger people are championing is that they're looking around thinking, what the hell is going on? Where? How come we were born here? Where's the country? And therefore, they were able to connect with the supreme leader, who saw what people couldn't see. The events that are unfolding in Nigeria today attest to the fact that he was a man that saw tomorrow. It took Abba Sanjoni years to realize that Nigeria is being felonized and Islamized. He was only voice in the wilderness, crying, asking people to wake up from slumber. Even though you have rushed to war, that war is coming to meet you. So what would be the same solution to this is to be prepared to defend yourself from an aggression that is coming to not only kill you, but to rape you, to discredit your fatherland. So what we are calling you today is maximum support as we receive Ohamadike in a mist. On behalf of all the people of Biafra, I welcome you once again, Ohamadike. I P O B. All family. I P O B. All family. I P O B. All family. One family. I P O B. Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be in Canada, and in Toronto to be precise. And this very fine evening, the grace of heaven will descend upon this very God when I can assure you. I am impressed with the turnout here. I never knew there were so many Biafrans in Canada. All I can hope for is that we continue in this same spirit of unity, sense of purpose and direction, to support everything that our leadership is doing here until Biafra is restored. I am sure that most of you would like to go back home to Biafra. There is only one way to accomplish that, and that route is I P O B. I P O B. A lot of applause for him too. Let me start by quickly introduce the principal servants. In I P O B, I'm talking to you today so that you can understand and learn few things about the organization indigenous people of Biafra. We normally address the people that lead us as chief servants because they're serving the people. Let me start to introduce to you. I'm the national coordinator of indigenous people of Biafra. My name is Zete Okafo. And I have Chief Colin Seokoke as the deputy national coordinator. And I have Princess Joy Ochiabuto as the secretary general. And I'm just gonna quickly introduce, we have coordinators in four provinces so far. I have the coordinator for Quebec, Ebbe Ogah. He owns the Good United Club in Montreal. So when you go down to Montreal, you wanna have some good time, check out the organized club. Good United Club. And we have Mazzi Celestin Omuka as the coordinator of Albata. And we have Mazzi Onieka, she were the coordinator of Ontario. And we will try to, if you see some of the flyers we sent out for this event, or the phone numbers that they send, so that you can contact any person directly or courses to your province. The coordinator for British Columbia wasn't able to make it to this particular event. So, but he is with us. He's linked with us online. And so, just like we said, this is the climax of what we've been doing for some time, sensitizing our people. That even if you're running away from the problems, the problem is gonna meet you. So the same solution will be be prepared. Educate yourself. I P O B is built on not only mass mobilization, civil disobedience. The key, most important thing that I P O B does is mass education. Educate ourselves, the dangers they face in Nigeria, the imminent dangers they know now, the dangers that we confronted down the line. We might not see them, but they do exist. The things you see today are just the tip of the iceberg, what is going to happen tomorrow. So, I'm glad to bring the oracle himself, the man that saw tomorrow, the man that is as fearless as he can get, the whole brutal regime in Nigeria. There's so many people, they call it so many things, so many names. Half man, half spirit, Ohamadike, the supreme, the commander of the indigenous people of Biafra. Anywhere you greet him, he's important to the task.
All of their goals.
All of their goals. The reason why he is here today is to speak to you, so that you can see him, you can feel him, you can ask him any question. Any question you feel like asking him. No matter how difficult it is, he's going to answer those questions today. While we were driving yesterday, he looked around, he says, beautiful country Nigeria. And he said, the only way this country was viewed, he didn't say, science says, undisciplined. Canada is. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't mean to say Bizzou. I need to say Canada. Here where we live. He looked at it, he said, the people that build this place were able to build it because they were disciplined. And he said, for Biafra to emerge and survive and succeed, we have to be disciplined. So, while we were driving in, I wanted him to come from the back door. He said, not only out of principle, but also as a prince, he will never enter a building from the side door. Ohamadike Ochiabuto. So, without wasting much of your time, we will go to the next item on the program. We will ask Ohamadike to please pray for us. I P O B. I P O B. I P O B. One family. I am delighted to be here in Toronto, Canada, before a very beautiful, polished, distinguished, esteemed audience like yourselves. There are going to be a few house rules in your phones around, please, and I'm about to put it on silent, non-vibrant, because we are about to pray. That the very Chugudikabiana, that not only created Biafra, but made our ancestors to inhabit it by his grace, may preside over our proceedings this evening to the eternal adoration of his holy name. Therefore, we call upon heaven itself. I will pray in the language of heaven, and I will also interject it with English language. You have to excuse me, because if you are in the presence of the almighty God, the creator, you will hear the angels worshiping in the local language.
Nansoko nyewani de. Aniwe ne ayoye. Esere bokade ngosi ma roba diye. Kiwe ya nyamonya no muri. Anyo wani bundi na di me ru. We n'oni we aporo. Awasa fulani we tika niwe nyenge mi na niye. Awala di prete nobody help la niwe ha. We buru ati chile ba ba di men dwa niye. Aniwe ne ayoye iti ma jana kiwe. Kiwe nyewe ba ba di men dwa niye buo chiketa. Aniwe ne bu bi opu di sumo re. Go ipo bi no wani ne buo kare kosi ra kosi. Ni na habu mu chi ne kongwe ka haponye we. Umo olugi kani bu kane tayini ru. Na Toronto na Canada na bandio uson. We ba niwe ba ba da. Kaniwe le manroka farani. Anyo wani na chi ne kenna. Esere bokade ngosi. Diya kiwe purani ni fu nasu na niwakari na ba keke. Kiwe kocha purani ajo mwa na jo ma. Kiwe chi ne ka ha. Na kende so. Bonde se na biya faraka niwe me ki siwe boha. Ani ne na kere. Bonde se no muri. Ayaya mungu ni manrobi to nyama na chi ne kenna. Da kiwe me kakasi na we pa ho niye. Omwe bu no bi bu no biyoni ne liwe. Mbi siro siwe bandibo. Na haga ba da ni ma freka niye ika bu da niye. No wani yo ba la wani ndu kuliwe ba saraya. Ni no bui bu chi ne kenna. Obuki talimi ne kere ke ma na ba go ni kere. Obu na ne bu ma niye no ku siye. Amacha amacha oka ka ke bu. Ane tuha anasini we biye. Anya mambiko ma niye ndu ka un. Ka ma no bu kena no biyama buo we biye. Obu no bu so chi ne kenna kiwe ka ane pa pasen so ba roba ipo biye. We na yo ye fa na ye manma ye. Ni men dwa niye ne no ti no ti. Kiwe te fa ni ma tebe isen no wa niye. We te fa mu wani na kende so. We koche hana niwe so behe ba niye no. We ko kaniwe ba ni na naso iwo biya sa ni ki siwe ba ni na uba. Kaniye ni na kede so bui chi ne kenna kene ni me ki we kosi ni me dwa niye na kende so. Ko we kana mesu na tuha buo ye no. Aniwe na yo re. O na liya na chi. Kiwe ko ka isemori we ba ni ni me na waliye. Kaniwe mu wani na niye. Kaniwe we manrota di ko kosi siwe ni ti to no niye. Ke hana na niwe ba ni ba niye no. Kiwe te ba ni. Kiwe chi no buo ye kosi kusuma raya niye. Ni na biya faraka biya re. Oh no, boss na. Na haga ye buzo na kende so. Oh yes, na biya faraka na haga na esere faraka niye. We kaniye 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 kaniye. Re re re, na yo ka ba yo re no siyo niye. Ni no ba ra yo re. Diya faraka ga joba niye kana diya faraka biya re. Obuki ya ma niye ndu kuliwe. Obu se na ma niye ne kere yo ni me liwe. Aniwe na yo ye na ma niye ne kere kiwe kocha purani ajo mwa na jo ma. Ni ne kere yo re yo re yo re. Teke lo tra naso naso pa ri cha ni ba no buo niye.
Ahmadike. 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 The Prophet of Adan. The next item on the program. Before we do anything. We giving process to God. We will. Send the nation of Canada. The national anthem of Canada. Please you may stand. Okay, let's go with the biya fara. And before we go Canada. Thank you, you may be seated. DJ, can you just put some biya fara songs as we get ready to move into the next item on the program? Thank you. Oh yes, do. Oh yes, do. There is a biya fara here. They play stars. The sign for them. He wants to play one or two stars. For you to develop your sound so that we can continue. His name is David Bessar.
Ahmadike Bruto. Oh te lo ku esee la po ba chi ne kere ba niye. Ba kana na fa akoni ke. Eme akoson sa go sa akoson biya fara. Oh yes, do. Chuku biya fara. Tu no da niyo. Chuku. Chuku ika niya ma. Anyo buo genya re no bi. Le we mo ne wa ni chebe ya. Ni na tika nuo. Oti wo roki muha. Okiri kiri kana ba tu kose. Aki na riye. Ane me na ki si. Abua kuruka tu roo. Oh wani yo kiyo ke meki. Unna di wa mati. Uka ni kano. Ni na di prince. Prince oni ya ma. Chuku do si eh. Oka do si so si eh. Oh baby heha ke meki. Ema re hebe. And ya manja is in your front. And ya girlfriend and ya lover. You have a sweet love. Oh re ba. Chuku pe la iwa. Chuku pe la iwa. Awale. Oh yes, do. Chuku pe la. Awale. Chuku pe la. Tu ra kana muhawa. Awale. Chi ma kela la ni na tika nuo. Chuku kela la ni na tika nuo. Yeso. Yeso. Donkadi. Yeso. Banji na tika ta ta faro. Banji ku la niha la kia sa kudo. Yeso. Banja usa tu na ja. Ha kurya na. Ata ro. Oh wani se de ku na o. Yeso. Ni na liye ke niye ku. Uda su pa la suo. Uda su pa la no niye. Oh yes, sa bo se la toa. Oso ku na ija ta. Oso ku na iku. Diya fara iswa. Diya fara iswa. Chuku wa di swa no ke. Teke ye naga. Teke no niye naga. Teke no. Teke no. Afuti ba go ro ro ki biya. Ba sha ma niye. Ni na tika ma chiwa ro ki ma. Uka su la ni wo ke kuho. Ma si ka li na liye. Eka ba la ba bukri ta. Okiri ruo no ku ya. Kiwa ta ki sa re. Ah tu bo ro ki. Ema re di ya na ya re. Ebo ro ke buo doa. Tu ku so se ba se ke. Oh yes, biya fara. Se mi hebe se ku. Oka lo ku ku ya. Ba niye mo lo. Oka lo ku ku ya. Ma si ma si kana nuo. Oka lo ku ku ya. Ni na di. Kana nuo. Oka lo ku ku ya. Ma si ma si kana nuo. Oka lo ku ku ya. Chuku pe la nuo. Awale. Kiyo so. Ke ye la. Awale. Chuku pe la. I go see eh. To see a clo. Chi ke go see eh. Ema ri se le na ri. I go see ni na chiwa bo bo lo go nu. Na wisi ke. Ni na ni tika nuo. Di na hoodi ya so ra. Di na ba re di me ya. Di no mo ku. Oh wani sa ka ye ku. Oh wani ka ri buki no ma. Ni na no ke tu no wo ya. Ni se niye. Oh wani ku de soa wo ya. Oh wani ye ba lo jo. Oh wani ku de so ku ya. Oh wani ye ba lo jo. Oh wani ku na ti so ku ya. Oh yes, do. Masu. Ahmadike. So ku ya. Ahmadike. Biya fara. Ahmadike. Biya fara. Ahmadike. Biya fara. Ahmadike. Ahmancio de go. Masu. Ah do. Ema wani ya ba ni meso di ni me wo ya. Ati we ke kiwi we sa la bo lo. Kiwa re. Ni go si be ya. Oh wani ku ta espa kore. Oh wani ya ba ni si be ya. Oh wani ku na si na ke la niye. Like you re bo ya. Oh wani ke si be. Ema na ye go toka de ba. Oh wani naso ku be. Si se le di. Masu. Akoni eh. Ema ri se le na ri. Go see eh. Go see ku. Chi ke go see eh. Go see ku. Ema ri se le na ri. Go see eh. Chi ke go see eh. Go see ku. Eh eh eh. Ri na ki. Prebiati. Ohre biya fara. 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 IPOP. Ohfa re le. IPOP. Ohfa re le.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Please, before we continue, just got a message that somebody whose plate number is BEXD225. It's a Honda car, you are blocking someone that is not part of this program. And the lady wants to leave. I wouldn't want if you come out the car throwing bad and you miss your car. But if your car is blocking someone across the street, BEXD225. BEXD225, please pull your car. The next item on the program is presentation of Colonaut. In our culture. One of the. Is to come see your place. For organization. In the city of Toronto. Wants to present Colonaut to you. And I'm calling on Chief Steve Aparando. And then it's okay. So please come and present Colonaut to Ahmadike. A round of applause for them.
Ibo kele ni. Ni bo kele ni. Ibo pezro ni. De ba esaka liko, we ba la le ba na po. Na fa na kacha liko. Oh ni bi. Si no buro kia ke ja ka ba na wa la wa. Ye ke ye stay wo ya. Ibo mani. 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 Ata di ke du la. Oh ni bo yinion. Ema re, oh ni bo yinion of Canada. Oh ba na na ba lo ba di bo. Ebe la e no. Ugo demba. Ero po la. Eka cha. Ni ka du mele. Ela ka. Ibo mani. Jo jo to. Oh wo wo ye ki mi ni bi wo jo. Wo wa. Ke be wo ya. One na ni wo ka dela. Ibo ye ba na le muha. Aba la mesi mesi. Oh ba ni wo kosi ka ka mesi ni ki bo. Oh do to ay. Ni bo yinion no ne ba. I ne ke du no. Chief Joe Wongo no here. Ah ma yo chi. Ne ya, ne ya chi na ya, ne ya. Ah oso so ni bo yinion. Ne ba, ni ko ni. Ta wo no. Ah ma ta ba ju no. No no se reprezentu no. Ah. Muha buo ya. Bo ne ka bu ni mo. Ibo ya na me ya. Ni buka ro. Oh, ana ba ni buka. Ika su no. Yes, re ni buka, eh ni ku na ba. Ibo mani. Eh ni ku na ya. Asa bo na kuwa. Ata la ni bo yinie ma. Ah. Ata ba ka muha ti se. Eh ni ku na here. Ata ke ta wo bre ke ya. Ni bo. Abu mo bele wa. Na ma do to di chi me di chi. Aga ma bo chief. Ahmedji. Um, aga ma bo. Chief Ahmedji. Obu yine di bo yinion. Fa wa fa wa. Edas. Amama. Oh re ya. Ata me ya, mo ka de, ata me. Chief Ahmedji ya. Ah. Ah, chief eh ko. Ah ma me no beba. De ali ye chi re di chi. Um, chief. Eme. De wo. Na di ye chi re di chi ne ba, iwe we du no. Ati Ahmedji ba na to ju. Bo ya kani do ha ba di ke. Oh no bu ra ha ba di ka, de bu ra mo ba. Oh, wo di ke di ke. Oh di ke lamba. Oh si ba na ni wo di buo di ke. Ni bo yinion de ke liya. So be la. No no de. Ota he di le buo, ota kocho. La la, Canada. Epo si be ke. Oban ma kuwa de man di bo. Ni hai brata. Oh so la one of the major. Talent di. Ibo, ibo yinion de buo mo. Me ma ni, ka ma. Ibo yi no bu si be ke. Ta biya faraka de. Anoaka de. Chief. Welcome. Ega la. Ibo ya na. Anasiki buro ja. Bo re ye na niye. One na ni wo ko. Ha ba di. Eko si eh ya. Eka ba ku ya. Uh, di ye chi re di chi no beba. Chief eh ko. Da da ra na ma ye. Uh, ega ra no, oh no bu la ma di si di ya da ma ye. Ko ko chi. Ko so be la ka de wo ke ba. Chief o ko ne ba. IPOP. Ohfa re le. IPOP. Ohfa re le. IPOP. Ohfa re le. IPOP. Eke de chief o biya biya. Eji bo hera personka de naso. Ma si na me ka lo. Ega. Ahmadike Biya Far. The chief commander of the Armed Forces of Biya Far. I ne lena na Canada na si ye gela. Oh, chi ne ke wo po tera mo. Wuha. Oh wo waka. Oh wo, okay. Oh ga. Wo po tera so biya biya roo roo na. Oh no bu la ma ota isin. Brina libo. Ke muo ga. Po ta ne wo ku. Oh me re la ni la ya. De na ma. De na na hoo za, huwa hoo za. De na na niha no na ya. So ye je mo ke. Thank you very much. And for your education, for your dedication, for your commitment, away again. Hi gela. Go, hi gela, you say eh. Ote we, I go na go in eh ho ni. I go. Ibo yinion is strong. Onga IPOP. Ongo ongo. I go eh ju. Now. Epo te loji, oje wo ye. Eja so no. Ni be ke. Iwa na ke be ke. Iwa te re. Timo. Oje. Chuku po ke biya ma na ke bu me ye niye. Oh ye ote roje ote re. Say. Chi ne ke me ma le ka ta. Oje. Oh ye eh, lo ku lo ku. Say. Oh ye eh, ya ma miye. Say. Oh ye eh, no wa ta. Say. Oh ye eh, lo ku ya. Ibe ye no ti. Say. Ba ko to biya yo no. Oti wo dona eh ba eh no. Le ka e mo ba. Che si ya. Kere ye niye. Wo re ye niye. Eh, ma si na me ka la wa. Tieno de mana. Ona achieve restoration of the Federal Republic of Biya Far. Say. Ni diye no so niye. Epo lo buo. Epo ni no bu la na. I ne le ta ba lo ta. Ka ta ta ndu te to ke. Ni ne ye niye. Ah, chuku po ke biya ma, ya ma. Say.
You were talking about your first mission journey to Canada. You came and saw the sea, and the Lord has happened from then to now. You've come to water the sea that you saw. And I agree that this time around, it will bear fruit, millions forth and billions forth. If you move behind there, you can register and join IPOB. For people who don't understand what IPOB is, it's a movement of free-spirited individuals who no longer see Nigeria as a viable option. If it's blessed for me, I would not be a member of IPOB. But I have a son. I don't know whether that son will ever go back to the zoo. Because if he goes there, he's going to leave the next morning. Because there's no nation, there's nothing happening. If we that live in diaspora wants to have a place to retire, if you want your name to continue so that OB can run, then you have to do something. If, I'm pretty sure Ohamadike will have said it, if Nigeria had won, I'm saying, supposing Nigeria had won, and we have all the tribes that make up Nigeria, and they love each other and understand the concept of building a nation. There's trust, there's love, there's unity, there's no pogrom, you would not have IPOB. The reason why you have IPOB and the prophet himself is because it did not work. Okay, Amen, I agree with you. I agree with you. There are also people who join the struggle out of hopelessness. Out of hopelessness. When you wake up every morning and you're weighed down by a problem and there's nothing that's happening, and you look towards the future and it's called hopelessness. And you cannot live in hopelessness. So we brought the message of hope. We have Suya there, it sold five dollars one Suya. And let me tell you something. The twenty dollars you paid coming in here on the Suya or the jersey or the T-shirt you purchased, if you don't know, we IPOB under the leadership of Ohamadike expects millions and millions of Naira to treat people that are injured, bring mass protest, people who are locked up for your freedom, our offices. When the zoo locks people up, from the day they get in, their rent needs to be paid, their children's school fees need to be paid. If I don't tell you, you will not understand. So the money you're giving us today is blessed money because it goes to the roots of the families or the people that are sacrificed for the restoration of Biafra. There are veterans here, Ohamadike. And we, before we continue, if the veterans here in this hall can come and welcome Ohamadike. I've seen Mazi Saemon Okoloji, I've seen Azikiwe, um, who else? Please, can you people come to the front? All the veterans, all the dads, they are from veterans.
I would like to take Aisha Abamba, Nini Na, Aika, Ripeka, Laun. I would give him. Amen, amen, you're right, right? Amen, Cha'ya, I'm going to go in a new. I can make it, I can make it, I'm going. I'm going to be the one. I see, eh, Jileke. Oh, yeah, I am. Oh, yeah, I'm good, you're mine. Oh, yeah, I'm over, I'm.
Yes.
Eh, Jilema, I, I need that. Now, I need my beach. I'm going to eh, Jile, Bongo, Twani, three, I'm sorry, three, four. Four, twenty-four hours. I need a boat, I need a boat, I'm going to go with you. You have a boat, I'm going. I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I'm going to cha'ya, I'm going. I'm going cha'ya, I'm going. I'm going to go, I'm going. You are human, I'm going. You're human, I'm going.
Never again.
I'm going to go, oh, go on, okay. Oh, you see, I can. I can see, eh, I'm going to go. I need it. Okay. He comes, he comes. I'm going to go. Oh, well, he may, okay, he, he might. He's going to do it. Who knows, I'm going to go, I'm going. The, uh, Roman people, the Jewish people, they say, they say, they say. I don't matter. Oh, oh, oh. I don't know. Who knows, I'm going to go. I need to go. Who's on the job, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. You put, what are they, they're busy, they're fat. So, I'm going to go. 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 Seven, seven, B S, seven, seven.
Ohamadike. I'm going to go.
Yes.
Shifted, shifted, shifted. Ha, but, but, ha, but then. Do we have the pictures now? Yeah. And you, you may see it. Okay. Please, you may be seated. One, two, three. You're welcome. Please, the next item on the program is the reason why we are here. It is time for the message of restoration. Please, if you have your cell phone on and you're moving, be seated. Be seated. I want everybody to be seated. Ohamadike, it is time for you to speak to IPOB. IPOB.
Ah, family.
IPOB.
Ah, family.
IPOB.
Ah, family.
Oh, family.
IPOB.
Oh, family.
IPOB.
Oh, family.
IPOB.
I am very happy to be in Canada today. I am not only surprised, pleasantly surprised, mind you. I am overwhelmed by the warmth that I have felt since I have been here. The generosity, the camaraderie, the togetherness, the sense of purpose and of direction. The whole world is watching this, by the way. If anybody had any doubt before today about the preparedness of our people in Canada to support the restoration of Biafra, I can assure you that those cars are going to bed. We've seen our elders here, our veterans have come. I have seen them, all some of them in Canada. We start with our veterans because without them, we wouldn't be here to start with. Without our veterans, our land would have been overrun by the djangjeh weed Wahhabi Islamists. What they wanted to do after the war was to kill every male child. Yes. And only allow those from ten years younger to survive. They will forcibly converted to Islam and our way of life and our people will be history. As I said yesterday and as I repeat today, the same thing they did to our South people was what they wanted to do to us. But because of our veterans that fought with nothing for three years to the amazement of the whole world that we may be here today in Canada as people in the land of the living. The sacrifices they made is so unique that we have continued to make those sacrifices till this very day. Therefore, in keeping with the spirit of the moment, I will ask everybody here to stand up. We are going to observe one minute silence for those that died, that were murdered, our soldiers and our heroes that fought very gallantly for Biafra to still exist as a nation today with people in it. The time starts now. IPOB.
Ah, family.
You may be seated, please. We have come that we may preach this very gospel. And I will start with the veterans, first of all. Before we came, before Chukwudikabiamma determined that we should come because we have not come by our own minds nor power. There was nothing like thirty eighth of May, heroes' remembrance. Is this very great family, this same IPOB that introduced it? And we introduced it for a reason. For you to proceed in life, you must acknowledge the sacrifice of those who went before you. IPOB all over the whole world will remember our heroes every thirty eighth of May of each year that the spirit of those that fought and fell in battlefields all across Biafra land may accompany us on this very glorious journey towards our freedom as a people and as a nation. It is very unfortunate that most people don't understand the symbolism. But given the turnout here today, I am sure that thirty eighth of May, twenty twenty in Canada will be something exceptional. I have not come to make you happy, I've brought you very bad news. The news from back home is terrible. It is awful, as I speak to you now, we continue to make this sacrifice. We are fighting Fulani people in Anambra. We are fighting them in Delta. We are fighting them in Igboi. And very soon, we shall also start fighting them in Nabi. This is the sort of news you don't read about. These are some of the things that IPOB is doing that I'm sure most of you here are not aware of. Those who go to defend our land are dying and are being killed. There is very little or no support at all. As our coordinator rightly pointed out, every fund we receive goes towards the frontline to take care of families whose breadwinners are in prison. Those killed, those who are being tortured, those who are being forced to deny who they are, those of them who are fighting for you and I. I know that some of us are removed. We are in Canada. I spoke to somebody earlier today and I asked him, how do you feel being in Canada not remembering the suffering of those who are at home, dying on a daily basis? Because I made it very clear to him, there is a difference between us and white people. As you all know me, I speak the truth. It doesn't matter the others, it doesn't matter what I am. Always, I will tell you the truth. Some of us came to Canada and forgot that we have relatives at home. That some of you came to Canada by the divine grace of Elohim, Chukwudikabiamma. That you may help support IPOB at this time to help liberate our home for all of us to go back to it. That is why you are here, but some of you have forgotten that. You think you came here by your own strength. You think you came here by your own ingenuity, that is not correct. You are here alive at this moment because of what we are doing. And that is why it is your responsibility, each and every one of you, to make sure you are part and parcel of this very noble family of IPOB. In whatever way you can support, we expect it. Because without you, Biafra will not happen. It is not about me, not about the DOS, not about my devoting, I'm a foreigner. It's about your own future. If you will not do Biafra for other people who are suffering back home, do it for your children. Because you have no religion. You have no language that can bind you together. The Jews survived for two thousand years because they had today's. Hebrew was their language. But we, we have nothing. I challenge anybody to stand up here and speak in their local dialect for ten minutes without adding a English word, which means that your language will be extinct if you don't go back to where you come from. That is human nature. I also remind you that if we make the same mistake of trying to find home in Canada because nature abhors that, your homes will be taken over by Fulani people in Biafra land. You know, when I say things, people think it sounds a bit strange. When I tell you the things, some of you doubt the authenticity or the validity of that very information, but in time, it begins to happen. Obasanja called us names. They called us miscreants. What are the names again they used to call us? Miscreants. Biafra, jobless. Where is it again?
Terrorist.
Ah? Terrorists. But today, Obasanja believes in what terrorists are saying. Dantuma believes in what terrorists are saying. What this noble IPOB family saw many years back, only now are they beginning to see it. That tells them that we are visionaries. That tells them that we have come here to do the work of God. And that is why Biafra will come. Some of you have doubts, but I don't. From day one, when I was arrested, when I was tortured, incarcerated, denied bail after bail in a competent court of law, when they came to kill me, when I went to rallies and the ports everywhere, I had one thing in my mind. I knew my destination, where I was going to. And that place is Biafra. There is nothing, absolutely nothing anybody can do to this mortal flesh to get me to either abandon or deviate from this very noble cause we have embarked upon. Nothing. Some say sometimes I dress too well. Somebody wrote an article and complained that Unamdekanona wears designer suits. I'm going to go. And I said to the fool that everything you see me wear is given to me by IPOB family members. Even as I got to Canada yesterday, what is that brother of ours, is he here at home? What is he? He's there. He gave me five pair of suits. And I have four important meetings to attend in the USA, and I shall be wearing them. When we started, in those days as a student, we used to attend people meetings and all the rest of it. They used to say to us, you don't love yourselves. You can never agree to be one. And I said to them that you don't know these people as well as I know them. Our people love only one thing in their life. Source of we, and only one, not two, not three, not four, not five, but only one. There's your good, you're good, one, simple and only. One. And they will watch you for years. They will watch you for years. Not only are you truthful, are you consistently truthful? Once you do it, they will die for you as a big family. Twenty-eight men. They said instead of me to die, that they would die. Twenty-eight men failed to make sure that I'm alive. And I asked them, why can't we stay here together? They said, if you don't leave this very place, if they kill you here, IPOB will be dead, Biafra will be dead for the next one hundred years. And I made them a promise and I said, because you have sacrificed your lives for Biafra, we will immortalize our existence with Biafra. And they will be known as immortals. Because of their sacrifice, Biafra will come. And there is nothing any idiot can do about it. Britain, I'm a British citizen, a British passport holder, I prefer to say. But I'm telling you here now with every ounce of confidence that Britain cannot even stop Biafra.
That's right.
Nobody can. The only thing that can stop Biafra is your fear. And I said that I will go to the zoo and when I do so, the next time the zoo will fall.
That's right.
I will go to the zoo and when I do so, the zoo will fall. Everything you have said I would do, I do, I have done everything. They said he cannot come home to preach this gospel and I went home and I preached it. They said when he leaves prison, he cannot rally. Bita Yako said that she stayed in my house and not see anybody. And I told them I will break every condition you have given to me because I have a duty to serve my people. It took them nearly seven years to concede that the zoo is finished. It will take them another three and a half years, as said, writing down a piece of paper for them to acknowledge that idiot you are seeing in Asorok is Jubil and Nenu and Sudanee. The day it will happen, I will go on radio Biafra and I will tell all of you, remember what I told you in Canada. We see things that people don't normally see. The day Bukhari died, I knew. I was in court. He was watching me via a secure line on AIT, which is one of the reasons why I don't like that very channel anymore. And we showed him a verse in the Torah. Because I was praying. If you doubt me, ask anybody that serves in the DOS. I told them what to do from prison. They have gone searching again, bring it. I said to them that Elohim has sent me a message that Bukhari will die for daring to arrest me. Elohim said, I should go to my Torah and ask Biafrans to come to Abuja High Court with Exodus chapter twenty written boldly on a white banner. What I'm telling you now will be verified in the next three and a half years when Aisha must have been fed up of all the nonsense. And she will ask for the husband's body to be returned to her. As she's doing now, but none of you or some knows anyway. She's been giving you the hint all this while that Bukhari is dead. I'll prove it to you now. Upon the word of Elohim, they came to the court and they raised the banner. So they let my people go Exodus 20. Bukhari fell down and was rushed to a hospital in England. They stopped over in Morocco. Till today, they are still wondering how I knew they stopped in Morocco, but I know they took a life support machine in Morocco. By the time they got to London, Bukhari was brain dead. Then they started the big morale, the trickery. Because every colorful animal who ever steps foot in the exalted office, be it the Prime Minister or the President of Nigeria, instead of that killed in office, they die in office or they're removed by a coup. When that assertion was made, listen very carefully. The Fulanis now decided that come hell or high water, that Bukhari or anything bearing the name Bukhari must remain in office for eight years. So when Bukhari died, they started shopping for a replacement. And they got this man from Sudan. They trained him. They started the process of confusing all of you with a bit of Photoshop, with the image of Canterbury, with this pastor, with that pastor, testing people to see in the lack setting. And the makeup artist was working overtime. After a while, learning that we are black people, of which I make no apologies for, because sometimes we lack critical thinking. Myself included. They convinced each and every one of you that that very young man, shorter than Bukhari, cannot speak Fulani language, which is forbidden. Younger than Bukhari, enjoying the money that comes from Biafra and via oil and gas. And maybe the other Aisha as well, I don't know, don't ask me. And all of you bought it. Yoruba newspapers kept publishing that this is Bukhari, that this is Bukhari because they have their eye on 2023-14, where Yoruba men become the president. But as I told Yoruba people on Radio Biafra, and I repeat today. Yoruba land, when I speak right, could you come and pray by some of you? Are you recalling it? Yoruba land will be taken over by Fulani people unless they change their ways, unless they support the breakup of the zoo, God Nigeria, Fulanis will take them over. Some of you will remember when I told you that Britain will suffer. Did I say it or not? Did I say Islam will overrun them? Did I say it? The day I served in two train of war was standing, asking me who asked you to say this one again. And I said to him, Lord, when he liberates him, he must surrender. And today, Britain is being overrun by Islam. Today, Britain is being torn apart because I speak to you, Scotland has stowed a second bill, asking for a referendum to break away from the Ghanter Kingdom. Even the EU is saying that they will make love to God for Britain. Do you know the funniest thing? I have told the British government, it sounds a bit funny to you that your problem is Biafra. As long as you remain in Biafra, directing Fulanis to kill us so you can have as much oil and gas as possible, Britain will be destroyed. Some of you are not following what I'm saying. It sounds a bit strange. That was how our agitation sounded straight to Obasanjo. And today is a convert. He's a believer. The reason why I want to come here is so I can reference what I'm saying properly, that you may follow it. I have come to Canada to teach, not necessarily. It's not a rally. I wanted to get away from here with something. When the constitution of the zoo was written, we complained and complained and complained that this very constitution is not fit for purpose. Some of you said, hey, leave it. It's democracy. When you get it, you change it. We said it's impossible because democracy is incompatible with the version of Islam that the Fulanis practice. Common sense. Today, they can remove your chief justice at will. They can rig election and rig anybody into power. If they like you, they dismiss your corruption charges. If they don't, they keep hounding you all over the place. But the world is quiet. I saw on the news today Sudanese protesting in Canada about what is happening in Sudan and the resistance of the people against tyranny and oppression from the military diplomats that took over just a few weeks ago. And it was on Canadian television news. They are killing us every day. We have rallied in Canada, in USA, everywhere around the world, but they will not cover it. Do you know why they will not cover it? As our father said when he came, because when people speak, I listen to them. He was telling, he was telling all of us here that this battle is against demons. We Biafrans are fighting demons we cannot see. Some of you think it's only Fulani, maybe with their Yoruba collaborators, no? Our enemies are very deep and very, very formidable. Every country in Europe, every major country in Europe has an oil company. And those oil companies are in Biafra land. And they don't want to leave. Why don't they want to leave? Because there is no meter measuring the amount of oil they take. No meter. So you want them to support an agitation that will mean this breakaway from that abominable contraption that will now compel them to pay for the amount of oil they take? So when you come to Canada and you lobby them to support Biafra and they say no to you, it's because the zoo lobbies are doing a very good job. And that is why that lady, what's her name? Say enough somebody. Mohammed, whatever. Sakura, whatever. Send one please. She is now the Deputy Secretary General of the UN. They have spent an inordinate amount of money, huge sums of money lobbying the whole world. If I take you now to CNN, if we were to organize a rally here in Canada, regardless of the validity of the claims that we make, regardless of the number of people that turn out, CNN will not cover it. The same way, they don't cover the death of Christians. There was a shooting in New Zealand. Everywhere was awash with the news of the death. That every Sunday, they slaughter Christians in their churches and nobody is saying anything about them. These are the enemies that you're fighting. When you see IPOB doing the best we can to liberate our land, I want you to have an idea as to how many monsters we need to confront. Some think it's easy. When you go on Facebook and write about Biafra, perhaps Biafra will come. It is not that way. Eventually, we will match. If we have to fight for 1,000 years to get Biafra, we shall fight for 1,000 years. I said, I will die in a battlefield facing my enemies, me with a gun, them with a gun, them with a gun. They came with air force, army, police. Even navy. On the land. When they knew that I was nowhere to be found, when they came to kill me, they decided to know the meaning of the world constitution. They don't know what it is. Forget all the nonsense in CNN, you're telling, Senator Dean, Senator that rubbish. Their brains are empty. I assure you. Obasanjo is calling for a meeting to settle the identity crisis in Nigeria. Obasanjo was a former president. So as a former president, he doesn't even know where he comes from. He has identity crisis. Now, if a former president is asking people to come so they can identify who they are after how many years, shouldn't that tell you that you are one almightiness in the zoo? But a black man's brain cannot comprehend it. Because we are black and we are from Africa. I say things where they are. When I talked about Aisha Bukhari, what I'm telling you is what they write. It's not what I made up. Aisha told Daily Trust newspaper, brother, come and end bandits now or allow all of us to be killed. Some of you here claim that Bukhari is a lie. Is that correct? You say he's alive and we have brain cells that still function. Some of our sisters are here, some of our mothers are here. And your husband is the commander in chief of the armed forces. And you claim you live in Asorok with him. When bandits attacks Zamfana, you never went to Chief of Family Staff to go complain, to do something. So the simple, logical question of this, Aisha, who is your husband? But our people can't reason along those lines. I would have gone saucy woman, where are thy husbands? See, still people cannot put one and one together. Aisha Bukhari wants the body of Bukhari brought back to Nigeria for burial. The cabal said no. They need to retain power for four years. And that's why they're in a hurry. You see all the jihad nonsense you see from Fulani headsmen? They only have four years to complete it. Only four. And by then, most of your villages will no longer exist. Unless you do something now about it. I'm appealing to you today because you are Biafrans. Not because you are black African people. I believe that you are bound to fulfill your destiny, the very same purpose for which the Most High God, Chukwumbe Gabya, put you in that part of the world, that you may bring light into Africa. No longer keep producing an obah. He's only an amen forever and ever. They are finished. We are the only place in the whole of West Africa where Islam did not touch the coast. Chukwumbe Gabya will not forgive us if we allow these infidels to come in. There is something about old soldiers. When they speak, you know. Niangwodo said he fought at the age of 14. Our elders are here. Maybe somebody will accuse me of being disrespectful. I am not. My father is a traditional ruler. I grew up in the village, so I know what it means to respect elders. But where we come from, we don't respect Okinawa either. Would I do that? Maybe some of your teenagers you do, we are come from, we don't. When you hear veterans speak, you know. Did you hear the veterans when they came here to speak? Did you hear their tale? Because old soldier never the more when this rule died during the war, you know the time that soldiers were. They still their time and they claim they were in battle, but they were not. Bukhari is dead, buried, and the Sudanese is in charge of you. I spoke to a government. I won't tell you which government. And when we are speaking, they said, oh, so you don't know he's dead? The other ones asking me, so you don't know he's dead? And when I talked about it, a Yorobatia approached and said, if this is jubilant as you claim, how come America received him? I said, because in a democracy, if you present a goat as your president, the world will accept that they get it. Because they don't know. The country that some of you claim that you come from, a Sudanese is in charge of your life, presiding over the worst genocide for nearly 60 years. And some of you think it's normal. To us, it's not normal. To we IPOB, it is not normal. Aisha was also begging for mosquito net. Are you aware of that? Are you aware? I'm not really using that. Are you aware that Aisha Bukhari was begging for mosquito nets? She said, where did you put the mosquito nets? Tell me, sir, can I get some? That the husband is the president. The husband is the president. And some of you can, or some of us cannot put two and two together to understand what is happening. Because over very many years, the Yorobas twisted our brain that we can no longer reason very well. All these things that I'm telling you are well documented and well reported in the zoo. That's what some of you know. And in the middle of all this nonsense, who is Eboi instead here, please? Eboi. Who is Eboi, please? Eboi is here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, thank you. Some of you know that Eboi is in trouble. Are you aware of that? And Eboi is being ruled by the same man that is a mortal enemy of freedom. Is one adversary of IPOB because he wants to stay in power. And some of you here encourage them. Some of you here still refer to them as the leaders. And that is why they have the impunity to preside over the rape of our mothers, which is an abomination in our land. A very serious abomination. A very serious abomination where we come from. Because of money and wealth, some of us can do anything to get close to any politician. Some of us will abandon and jettison every vestige of honor and dignity that we possess in order to endear ourselves to this people. Some are perhaps driven by envy and by jealousy. But regardless of what it is, I can tell you today that your land, where you come from, Fulani have succeeded in planting leaders for you to do their bidding, to allow them to come in to take over your land. Umaru managed to cry out to say, "Our mothers are being raped." Anam, which was attacked, Opiyama said nothing about it. Absolutely nothing, a sitting governor. When we campaigned for the boycott of Anambra elections, we are called all sorts of names. But we knew that such a day will come, when our people will realize the futility of not only their PVC, but their willingness to trust the democratic process in the zoo. Therefore, here in Canada, with a very mild voice, I am here to all of you to do that which is necessary to ensure our survival as a race and to ensure that Biafra is restored. If you go home and do nothing, nothing will happen. But if you go home and decide to do something, something will happen. And that thing is the restoration of Biafra. I am pleading with all of you. Some people came from Vancouver, is that correct? And other far-flung places in Canada. You will go there and you will tell the people, you will mobilize them, you will talk to them about IPOB. They must either belong or they support. Because if you don't, Biafra will come. And when your flight comes in from Canada, we will check our register. What I'm telling you is the truth. I spoke to somebody who says an intellectual. If you don't support this very movement, God in heaven that I worship is my witness, you will not enter Biafra land. I'm telling you so you can go and not participate. And I'm telling you so this will be a litmus test in history, that you will understand that everything I say comes to pass. When I say that Biafra will come, Biafra will come. When we speak, we speak on that divine authority. Everything we say must come to pass. So, you want us to contribute our money? You want us to die? When we die, you body the plane and come with your children. And then you say those that died are idiots, that they are fools. It doesn't work that way. Because the nation we are building is a model nation, something that other Africans will emulate and they will copy it. There must be patriotism in each and every one of us. It doesn't matter what we do. I keep saying it all the time. Elohim told me that only 100 men are needed to restore Biafra, 100 pure men at heart, for their sake that Biafra will be restored. Not those who think that we do what we do for one or two ulterior motive gain. If you can do this better than myself, please come. Because we love leadership. If you can do it better than myself, please come. I will gladly support you, as I did for 18 years, before IPOB came, or before Tchubukikar Biafa determined that IPOB should come. Biafra needs you. Your land needs you. If you fail to serve Biafra, Fulani will take over, and then you have nowhere to go to. Was it not in Canada, somebody was raped? A man and a wife. They raped the man and they raped the wife. Is that, is that not true? And the man is living in Canada, isn't it? A nine-year-old daughter has won, was raped. Now, you know you're no longer safe. It is therefore in your interest to support IPOB to ensure that Biafra is restored. When such a person heard about IPOB and what Biafrans are doing, I'm sure he was dismissive of it. Now, he has gone to the zoo to witness firsthand what the zoo is like. Are you waiting for it to happen to you and your family before you learn that only IPOB can save everybody? They say we are fighting for Biafra because of oil. And I said to them that all the oil in Biafra land is illegal to the people. Are you doubting me? Go and get the map of all the oil pipelines in the zoo and it will be shot. We say we want Biafra. People don't understand us. But I'm sure from today you will understand what we are doing. Because we are fighting for you, for your survival and that of your children. You are in Canada. Your kids probably don't speak Igbo, or Ijum, or Ifig, or Ido, for that matter. Let me tell you the truth. Your children will marry outsiders. And when that happens, your name will be gone. The name of your family will be permanently erased from the face of the earth. Because there is a name where we come from, is a called Ahamefri. If we all decide to remain in Canada forever and ever, who is going to build our heart for us? That's what I'm asking. Who is going to do it for us? Who will build our... You know, we like to come to Eboni Lengen. That is where we only attend meetings and someone's where we know who have cellophryce, nobody knows. When they say to you, "You have come to overshadow the so-called Niger Delta", you say to them that we never conquered anybody before. We are not conquerors. Owosa conquered all there, because Fulani came and conquered Owosa. Yoroba has left Ifig to conquer all those around them. But we never conquered anybody, then we are warriors. We fought the British for nearly 100 years. Before they destroyed our country in 1904, we cannot dominate anybody. We're enterprising, we are blessed. I will move in again. We are blessed. Anywhere we go, we bring light. So, people misinterpret and they misunderstand it. They do not see it as the blessing in grace of God. They see it as a trait of dominance. In Biafra land, everybody will mind their business. I repeat, in Biafra land, everybody will mind their business. Igbo people will stay in Igbo land and make laws in Igbo language. Ifigs will stay in Ifig and make laws in Ifig language. The same thing applies to Igbo. The same thing applies to Isero, to Robo, anybody that was used to be alone, you will be alone and on your own. The same way we wear before the white man came. So, there will be everlasting peace. That is the constitution that people are afraid of. That is what the zoo doesn't want to see come to light. But we are resolved, we are determined, and we are focused. And if what I'm seeing here today is anything, in fact, what I'm stressing from yesterday is anything to go by, then I can assure you that Biafra is a lot closer than we think. Those of you in Canada, you are like the country that you relate. Yes. They don't make noise, but they're very, very effective. Canada is a morally upright country, being honest with you. Morally upright. Yes, they are. If you violate the rest of your people, this Canada will withdraw their parcel off from there immediately. Very strict. I don't know what the queen is still doing as the head of station. If you people can emulate Canada, if you can emulate Canada, have the same conscience that this country has. Believe me, we have no problem. Only who here can give us Biafra. I want you to understand something this evening, that regardless of what we do, that Biafra is going to come. If you sit down and do nothing, the Fulanis will take us over. Because they are in a hurry. As they are in a hurry, so too should we be in a hurry to restore Biafra. Is there any reason why Biafrans in Canada? Is that not correct? Because of that thing that we have in us about truth, consistency, and transparency. That is why you are here. And I assure you, on this very day, in this very town, or should I say, in this very city of Toronto, that we shall see Biafra in our lifetime. And as that is happening, you will write this one down. By the time that we are done with the zoo, the name Nigeria will no longer exist. That is why we say that the zoo must fall. It must fall. Never to rise again, the zoo must fall. I know that some of you are like me. I got to Canadian border and they gave me a form. They said, "Where were you born?" At that moment, I was overcome with fear. I kept saying to my assistant, "What are we doing? Should we write Nigeria?" So, I looked for Biafra, there was no Biafra. I said, "What, do we put, do we put maybe Seshel or somewhere else?" That is how terrible the zoo is. I have nothing with them. But I cannot even come into Canada without being afraid that the non-veteran could cause me problems. And some people say they are from Nigeria. When somebody asks you where you come from, please tell them that they're Biafran. If they ask you where, you say it's on the eastern part, it's bothering Cameroon. And lastly, this evening, the hatred they have for you cannot be quantified nor measured. There was a man. They said they are fighting corruption, is that correct? They said they are fighting corruption, is that correct? Do you know the first person to be jailed in this corruption fight? Is a Igbo man. Do you know how many years he was jailed for? Do you know how many years? 102 years. You don't know these things because Yoroba media will not report it. You don't know these things because they want you to believe that you're part of Nigeria. You won't know these things because most of you attend Yoroba Pentecostal churches. You know, I speak the truth. You go to Winners? You're a carist, you see for them. I want to pick four people at random. Give us your full name. Please, stand up, give us your full name. His name is Chita. My brother, what is your name, please? Yes. My dear sister, what is your name? Do I know you? I'm picking people at random. And the Winners, the one that goes to Winners. What's your name? Now, listen very carefully. Of all these names mentioned, they give glory to God. By virtue of your name, Chigodinaga, anytime I call your name, I am praising God in heaven. Then you left that to go to church where somebody's name is Kumi. They say I bring religion into Biafra. And I swear to them, without religion, Biafra is nothing. Without God in heaven, there will be no Biafra. These are former Muslims. They were in Islam. They have discovered that his money and diet and his aim of sea is a rabbit. I have come to speak the truth, not to make everybody happy. Am I lying when I say that most Yoroba pastors were Muslims before? Is it a lie? Is it a lie? They use their media dominos to deceive all of us. It's like waiting for CNN or BBC to write something good about Biafra. Do you think it will ever happen? Will this ever happen? An Igbo man has been jailed for one hundred and two years. When we know that the former EFCC chairman Ibrahim Lamode, do you know how much he stole? Huh? Nonsense, five point eight billion dollars. Ibrahim Lamode. You don't know him? The Babacha Laba are not stealing money? Are they in prison? Because they are in power. And that is why we say that that very country, that damnable so-called republic, whatever foundation that is holding it, to go back and naturally destroy it. That is why today we pray that the spirit of Biafra will enter inside each and every one of you. The spirit of truth, the spirit of enlightenment, the spirit of honesty. That all of you may behold the glory of God upon our lives in this time, in this age, in the land of Biafra. What we do is not by the might of man, neither is it contrived nor planned, but through the mercy of the Most High. Therefore, we say this evening to all of you here gathered, that if you have decided within yourself to make that everlasting change, to embrace Biafra, work for Biafra, see Biafra restored, that glory may belong to the Most High, that will be the greatest thing you will have ever done in your entire life. Because if you don't do anything, our mothers will be raped. If you don't do anything, our daughters will be abducted. If you don't do anything, they will expand the teaching of the Quran in our schools. It started in Anambra already, in case you don't know. Do you know that? Or the very many that teach in Canada. Do you know that they are now teaching Quran in our secondary schools? What are we doing about it? You see. You understand? Because IPOB is doing everything. Doesn't mean that IPOB should do everything. We have finite resources. We are battling people. Hundred and forty is in prison, hopefully tomorrow they'll be released. Has anyone asked us, how do you feed one hundred and forty people in prison? Then we do that. The soldiers in the battlefields of Anam, fighting for army headsmen in Abu. And they were going to have a birthday. Do you know how we finance them? Do you know how finance them? You know. There are people who believe in you're right, it is a responsibility for IPOB and we are dealing with it. But you know, the task does a terrible misunderstanding of which Canada said, no, that is rubbish. Because if I were to be a terrorist, I cannot cross any international border. So I said plus that. The fact that I can travel freely around the world goes to show that the targeting of IPOB as a terror movement is a concoction by the foreigners to hamstring us, so they can come to Ireland and take it over. And we are fighting and we are dying. All these fronts I'm telling you about, people are dying every day. And we take care of their families. But not very long now, that thing the zoo has been asking for, we will give it to them. I went to America, I went to war, the war come place, that was in twenty fifteen. And I said to them, we need guns and we need bullets to defend our land. When I went back and they took me to court, our minister was saying that what I did was reasonable. Only yesterday, Niawo, they said, we must defend ourselves. Since twenty fifteen. What I saw twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen. Only now they are saying, I will never mislead you. People here, uh, maybe I travel, I'm in Canada. I have no life. I abandoned my family that Biafra may come. I seek for one thing, I conceal it. I want our children and their children and their children to remember this generation. To say that this generation fought for freedom. And that this generation succeeded in getting freedom. That in their time, Biafra came. That in their time, I hear my best story. But in their time, we brought life into Africa. That in their time, we do something African for us. Therefore, I say, in conclusion, if you can all stand up, to dedicate this teach code to your mother. The Almighty, whom we praise and worship in his infinite mercy, will your children ask for only one thing? The privilege and the chance to live as we intended. We know we sinned against you. We know our ancestors sinned against you. We know we sold our lives into slavery. We know we did all our abominable things. But your promise remained forever. Because your word is yea and amen, anything that comes out of your mouth must come to pass. Heaven and earth may cease to exist, but your word shall remain to eternity. Therefore, we pray this very day, that these your children in Canada, that you will bless every of them, therefore, that you will give them understanding, you will grant them intelligence, to see that which is to come. And that is your promise and that is your glory of Biafra. That we will be in that very land to glorify your name, to give you praise and admiration. Unto your holy name, to Pogikabiam. Do we pray now and forevermore? IPOB.
A round of applause for Ahmadike. Give it to him. Please. The next thing we're gonna be doing is question and answers. Can you give me audience, please? Audience, please. The next thing we will be doing is to be taking your questions on any subject you may wish to ask in question. We will give you time to ask your question, to ask your questions. If we do this orderly, if we do this orderly, we will get to as many people as possible. But let me tell you, please, let me appeal to you. Sometimes people misunderstand, don't understand what a question is and what making statements are. You ask people to ask question, then they start giving us lectures. The people here, we have a limited time to speak to director, the sprint leader himself. There are some things that are flawed, that you need further explanation on any subject, politics, religion, international relations or even personal matters. Be precise and I would advise you to please write your questions down. It's always easier when you write your question so that you do not stray from the question. You could make a statement or a statement of fact or point a press release and then ask a question as a rejoinder to that particular subject matter. So, but you know, sometimes I understand people are probably trying to express themselves. And that's why I advise you to write down your questions. And when you write it down, it's easier. You don't lose your line of thought and you're precise. Ahmadike, are you ready to take questions? I'm gonna call on a representative from Dibo, Canada. We met with community associations and they specifically went with the Afri evangelism. They said that we want question and we obliged and we have promised you that when Ahmadike comes, you will ask question. And I'm calling, I'm gonna call on Lambert Echelobi and Aham Wosu, the two people that should ask the questions. May you please come forward.
Thank you. IPOB, one family. Ahmadike, it's an honor to see you and also to ask you this question. I just have a simple two questions. One is, I have a little concern. I have a little concern regarding, uh, our neighbors in Biafra land, which is the south or south. Niger Delta. There has been a lot of issues on internet lately about Asarid Opo and its group. What is IPOB doing about it? That is my first question. Then the second question is to ask about your parents. Uh, we're all aware of the day the attack happened in your house and we believed they were in their house that same day. We don't know the whereabouts, whereabouts of this kind of time, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you well know, I don't respond to gossip. That's one thing about me. But regarding what we are doing about our cousins from the coastal part of Biafra, as I refer to them, because there is nothing called Niger Delta. Nobody comes from a place called Delta. Delta is a Greek word, which means basically where a body of water runs into a larger body of water. Where the river meets the sea. So nobody comes from the Delta region. Because if then somebody comes from a Delta region, that means that those from Mississippi, Delta is also related to them. There is nothing like South South either. It doesn't exist. These were names concocted by our enemies to divide us. Most people in a Johnland, including Angu, prison and the rest of them, are from Arubu. And they know it. They conceive to it. They know this very well. Anybody trying to claim or imply or suggest that what we are doing in this movement is an Igbo-centric or Igbo-only affair, the person is mistaken. They forced people to protest when I was arrested, where our mothers from Awabon. Awabon women, they forced people to protest. People walked all the way from Abon to Enugu, they spent four days on the road to go and attend a protest to make sure that I'm released. Those that blocked the bridge on Niger included everybody. So forget the effort by the European media to drive away between us. We are all one family. But as we know, in every family, there are normal people, there are people who are from very far, from here. And we welcome all shades of character in Biafra land. And with the difficulties that comes with it. But we know that we are all seeking for freedom and that is where we are focused and that's where we're going. It's a moving trend. IPOB is the largest mass movement in the whole world. I said the whole world, bar none. And I didn't do it because it's Igbo, they don't do it. IPOB is the largest mass movement on this earth. I'm telling you. If anybody claims that we are, they don't know or they have not heard about IPOB, they are mighty themselves. And regarding my parents, they are they are ill. But, um, they are in my possession, let's pray that.
Thank you, Ahmadike. Uh, the next person is Aham Wosu, are you here? Okay, um. The next person is Ikemwago. Ikemwago is a real estate agent. Uh, says he wanna buy a house in Toronto if he can meet him.
Honorable, uh, uh, predik. Uh, my question is, uh, I really, we really appreciate you coming to here today, Canada, for the first time. Um, my question is, you know, through your travels and meeting with world leaders or or some like the powers that be, like US, uh, Britain and who else in the West, have they ever in trying to negotiate and ask what they can help us with in this effort? If let's say they they come up with proposing to you like the British because they get it something from Nigeria, from the Kabal, from the foreigners in Nigeria. If they propose something about them giving up, you know, us giving up some of the things that they're getting from them and they're not. Because at the end of the day, I know they will never give up whatever they're getting from that. If that's a proposal that they make to you that we can give them some of the things that is get from the law, for them to help with our effort, is that something that we are flexible on working with? Thank you.
Thank you, it's a very good question. The truth of the matter is this, and please let's not attempt it, I beg of you. If it were any other group of people, they would say yes. But Britain will always say no to the emergence of Biafra. If you like, give them the whole world. Because there is, you know, you have the local village Kabal in Asorok headed by Abakayari. There is also in the world Kabal. They don't want to Biafra to emerge because of what Biafra They don't want Biafra to emerge because of what Biafra represents. Because of what I refer to as the spiritual dimension of Biafra. Then the other ones that interested, they are manipulative. They want us to be free. Then what they said to me, I will tell you in the hope. They have not seen enough seriousness from you, freedom is not cheap. Freedom is not something you ask for the right letter, ask for the center, we have written to the mayor. And I said, what did you do after the writing of the letter? Nothing. If there is follow-up, if you are on the streets of this Canada, all of you here protesting. Month after month, one day they will say, they can hear their name, but what are they, why are they stopping us? As I told them today, you know Liverpool Football Club, that is my club. Yes, not because the one the hero they are called. There was a disaster in a place called Hillsborough when Liverpool went to play Sheffield Wednesday. Many, many decades ago. Liverpool fans kept protesting for nearly thirty years until they got what they were looking for. I'll give you another example, Southern Sudan. Southern Sudan fought their war for thirty years, we fought ours for only... Now you see the difference? Tenacity and consistency, tenacity and consistency. Now they know that you are serious. The fact that we surrendered in nineteen seventy, some of them we are still holding it against them. Because they said had the war lasted another six months, that Nixon would have changed his mind. Do you understand? When you just don't wake up in the morning and say, I want to fight for freedom. If you're not prepared to go through the pains and the hardship and the sacrifice needed to accomplish it. That is why I said I will sacrifice everything. If I die today and Biafra will come, believe you me, I'll offer myself to be hanged now, here. That's how far I'm prepared to go. But if some of you are in Canada, you go to work, you come back, you do nothing else. You go to one meeting or the other and that's it, talk about Biafra, Biafra will not come. You must do something. As I said, all of you here, believe you me, if you swear your government, because I am not a Canadian citizen. Are you following me?
Yes.
I cannot contact maybe your, your NDA or whoever, but you can. How many of you are reading to your own piece about Biafra or that Liverpool are dying? How many? Just, just look at about four people. And the United Nations, they have votes, they like votes. And we have the numbers here. We can go to a political party, I said to them, if you support us, we will vote for you. It's as simple as that, but we have done nothing. So when I go as a lone ranger to the Canadian government, writing and saying to them, they'll be thinking to themselves that you have, you clearly have Liverpool here. If what you're saying is true, how come they are not disturbing me? That's all. So we all need to try and do something, thank you. Thank you Ahmadike. Um, the next person that's gonna be asking question is Ike Sere. Ahmadike, I'm so pleased to see you because of all. You gave me the sleepless night for years, especially when you went missing. I couldn't see, I couldn't, I took it very personal, I became like that times. I, I only connected with you just two years ago. I never heard about you, don't know nothing about you, but then two years ago, listening and watching you online. You taught me some things that I should have known growing up in Nigeria. I've been in this continent for thirty-two years, I don't know nothing. I learned so much from watching you. I came from Saint Émile to here thirty-two years ago. And your world of knowledge and spirit is amazing. I told my wife that I say, I'm going to sleep. Now I'm a candidate that was always making me sleep late. I will come back from work, I will keep watching at four AM, five AM. I still have to wake up after the work, haven't three or four hours of sleep. So I wanna ask you, what do you, let me finish, this is my moment. He said that I'm better to be, okay, so this is my moment. I have come to the realization that God really said. God really said. Um, I'm not supposed to be here for one reason. Because, okay, say it bad, it's my cousin from the same company. I don't agree with it, I don't share with these motherfuckers. They are all watching me, even back home, I don't care. This is me, I'm just like you years ago. I'm unbragable, I'm unsoundable. Because if my people are happy, I am happy. That's why I'm here today, they can watch me all they want, I'm gonna be in the next one part. I told it. So, I don't know if you have any news for me. IPOB. IPOB. I, I thank you very much, uh, my dear brother. Okay, so if those things are beyond pardon. And he said this to me when he said, I said, to market somewhere. We will hunt him down, even if he's ninety-nine years old, we'll find him. He will stand trial and he will hang publicly. He is a person, a boat, when Volkswagen car that is blocking someone is CC DM four five two. Charlie, Charlie, David, Mary, four five two. I repeat, Charlie, Charlie, David, Mary, four five two. Volkswagen car, you're blocking someone, please, if you don't mind, you can go up with your car. Um, the next person that's gonna be asking question is Amota Twain. Is he here? I saw him here before, it's last I guess. Obasi Oka, are you here? Please come on. Please, there are people that came from Montreal, there are people that came from Ottawa, they're gonna be driving, so uh, please make your question precise.
My question is, uh, what is, uh? My name is Obasi Oka. My question is, uh, what's the, uh, uh, efforts towards getting a referendum?
Our quest for referendum is ongoing. With or without the approval of the UN, we shall hold our referendum. For the simple reason as I explained earlier. Her name is Zakaria Mohammed. She is the Deputy Secretary General of the UN. Yes, forty people saved up eighteen billion dollars as their war chest lobby. That is why John Kerry can go to the north, that is why Tukla goes to the north. Are you following me?
Yes.
You know, when I say we, we are fighting, too much people don't understand this. So if you're waiting for UN to sit down to pronounce a referendum for Biafra, we are wasting our time unless we compel them to. And there are only two ways we can do that. Consistent civil disobedience or we go to war. That's all. Without war, they will not ask us to have our referendum. It's as simple as that. But we can compel them using consistent means of civil disobedience. Those of you in Canada must do something. Everybody, everyone must do something. Thank you. Thank you, as we are talking, there is Suya, like I told you, existing states. Um, there are caps, there are t-shirts, all the efforts you're making is geared towards helping people that are in need. People who put their lives every day on the line. Um, the next question, person that asking question is Bob Mbah, are you here please? Is Bob here? Okay, he's gone. I wanna thank the last person that asked question. That's the kind of question we wanna take precise so that other people have opportunity to ask question. Bob is there?
Yes. Um, uh.
Before I forget, please, uh, the sprint leader of the indigenous law of Biafra is here. And we, members of IPOB, we must understand that these people are our clients. At no reason will you be rude or talk back when people speak because we need them in the struggle. It's no longer time for you to use different word or different things. They are our people, we need them, and that's the message he's saying today. So when someone speaks, you don't assume he knows, if he knows, you will be asking question. Thank you.
Salam, Azim. Um, my question is, uh, I believe there is, uh, see, there is a committee that is, uh, in charge of all this movement. Um, and I believe this committee, oh, my question. My question is, this committee, do they have other Biafrans from other states? Like the Cross River, Rivers and other, uh, Delta incorporated in this committee? I would like to know, that's one question. Then another question is, if there are organizations from these states, have you had town meetings with them, like the Calabas, the Rivers and all that? And it bothers me when I think about them. For example, there are people from River State, um, Awabon and all this order, um, what we call South South, which I really don't believe. They are in this country, they are in this, uh, province. But I'm surprised that they are not here, they are not represented here. Like how many numbers, I mean, like, they are here for numbers, what I'm talking about. If we get together with these people, if we get together and they come out to show their support, I think it will give the zoo reason to worry. We shouldn't be doing this, it's like, uh, we are being like the sacrificial lamb, the Imbo's. What we do is, sorry, that's not for me to answer. Um, we should get them together, like we should invite them or we should have a towns meeting with them so that we will have that confidence that these people are actually with us.
Thank you very much. IPOB. Regarding your first question, the answer is a simple yes. Regarding your second question, the answer is also yes. If you listen very carefully, in fact, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, there was a very powerful editorial written by Newsweek. In that editorial, they said that should IPOB come together officially with the Avengers, that the zoo will fall. You must also know, for those who are saying that we are not together or think we are not, Avengers started because of my imprisonment. The number one demand of ND, uh, is the release unconditional of Nambikana. It was only when the criminals started coming in that they started moving my name down the order. Before I left prison, I think I was at number eight. I refer you to what Governor Okowa said four weeks ago. Do you know what he said? What did he say? Can somebody give him the microphone to tell our brother what the governor of Delta State said?
Said any day South South join Biafra, they are from Africa.
Simple. So they are the ones wasting their time, they are waiting for full army headmen to come. Like Obasa do before they wake up. They're with us. And I know one other thing they are waiting for, but I can't tell you, only me and Uche have phones. It's not for this audience. And we'll do that thing, once that thing is done, you will see them in larger numbers than you ever might. Thank you. The next person is Emmanuel Duro. Emmanuel Duro. You know, I've seen this, oh, okay, it's gone.
IPOB. One family. Ahmadike, I must thank you for seeing the one I want today. I must say you're a great man. When you say that IPOB is the largest movement in the world, I'm surprised people don't know. I'm surprised. My question is very simple. In Anamra election, they were so consistent in making sure that IPOB people do not come out to vote. But in two thousand and nineteen election, I had a diary, I think I heard your broadcast, telling IPOB to go out and vote. And you mentioned a lot of things, but it also took place to me, because personally, let me not use that word, personally, I wasn't happy about it. Now, whatever reason that led them to give you that pressure is what you did not explain very well in your broadcast. So I wish to know, thank you.
It's a very good question, it's all a question that I like. And please, you will listen to me very attentively. Our people are Republicans, understand this. When you're leading our people and you're in front running, once in a while you look back and make sure that they are, that they are close. Because there's a deal where in the running, they look at you, how you are running. Because there's a deal where in the running, they look at you, how you are running. They will say they can't understand this, and they will stop and they watch, they won't move anymore. Yeah, welcome, what are you doing? I'm trying to express something here. Our people, APC was counting on the boycott to read the election in such a way that Attiku and Oki could not contest it. Understand this. And the blackmail came that we are doing this thing for selfish reasons. Our elders kept calling me one after the other. And I said, I want terms and conditions met. And they were met. If I did not call off that very boycott, IPOB would have been dead by now. They would say, you know, they call me boy, they say that boy doesn't listen to anybody. We don't want anybody to fail and they will blame IPOB. That is how our people are. I understand them very well. I spent fifteen years studying inside you. Vadi Go Man.
You're right.
Fifteen years. If we did not call it off, we'd be dead by now as a movement. As simple as that. We wanted to, if I ask our people to sit at home and they sit at home, and on one occasion they're asking me to do something and I refuse, if I ask them, they will say, that's how they are. We cannot afford to lose their goodwill. You are all Republicans, you beg, this is the first meeting I have ever seen, well attended, the hall is full. And they actually beg to come in.
Yes.
I've never heard it before, I'm telling you, it's never happened before. And, and being honest with you, it has never, ever happened before.
That's correct, yes.
Will you be here? If you don't follow this message which I preach?
They will.
Did anybody force you to come?
No.
That is how we are. Anything I'm doing from today onwards, I will take the views of all of you here into account. Because I'm not doing it for myself. There are some things you can see which I cannot say. You know, when elders keep calling you, calling you, calling you, one, and you say that I must do it. You know what they used to say to me? This was what Odupo did that he feared. They go to, I say, go, I say, go, I say, go. I listen to people. I, I keep saying it to radio Biafra. If I hold a viewpoint and your argument is superior to mine, I will drop my own and I will take your own. And in the thoroughness of time, three and a half years, you will understand that us calling off the boycott has allowed them to come in on Biafra. Thank you very much.
The next person is, uh, Lawrence Onokuba.
IPOB?
Oyebi!
Ohamadike, even my parents. I'm in your legal team, Wunah, if I hear you. For two years, we've been battling it. From magistrate court to special high court, to appeal court, to, to Echo As Court, we are sitting there and we get justice. But my question this evening is, you made mention of we lobbying our MPs for those of us that are in Canada here. And I want to know, because I believe this is a movement. We have to utilize help from everywhere. What efforts can we make to get people into that government, I don't want to call Zou or anywhere, but to get people into that government that we can work from, from within? If we have enough senators, enough House of Lords, even with our lobby and have governors, I think and I believe, they will work from inside while we work from outside and we will get to where we are going faster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm also very happy with your question because it ties in with the last one our brother asked. We wanted to prove to people that your PVC is useless also. The moment, the reason why I pass with steel bag is because IPOB is against him. So I was, I, full of eye neck, decided I must go to the side. That's the way it goes. When we boycotted that number of elections, less than three percent voted. They wrote the figures and said it is sixty-eight percent or so. Bouhari got three percent of the vote in Apia State in twenty fifteen, Jubilee got twenty-eight percent. Is that possible?
Impossible.
The Zou is terrible. Nothing works inside the Zou. If you trust your PVC, it, they will just wait for you. You go and do all your campaign, do your voting. They quietly sit down with their intellectuals, the professors, the VCs, and they falsify the figures. And they give it to whoever they like. That's what they do. The same person that you are going to vote in, well, they get wind of it, that person has already failed. Or you'll be disqualified. And that's the end of you. You can't anything about it. That is why we say we must destroy the system and build Biafra, because there's no hope in it. Thank you.
The next question is, you, Mok.
Thank you. Hamadike, hello. Uh, I have two questions. The first one has actually been answered, and that has to do with the elections. And because we are wondering why you made a statement about they have agreed to our request, and I, I wanted to highlight those two words, day and agreement. I was going to ask, who are the day and what was the agreement? Uh, the second question has to do with the membership of IPOP. Right there in Canada, we have so many Ibo organizations, let me just say that. And these organizations are not automatically members of IPOP. IPOP is a separate organization and individuals are supposed to register individually into this organization. Is there a way that we can change that dynamic whereby the membership of IPOP is made easier for group organizations? And we have done that before in some of these organizations, whereby we have a kind of group membership and affiliation because the people we are looking at here are not just IPOP, you know, understand that. IPOP not even from, you know, the bottom of the people here. So how can we increase the membership to include almost every Ibo person or every Biafran?
First of all, there is an agreement and at the right time, as I keep saying, because you know me, I don't lie. My truth is, I don't have a reason for it. I will release it. But I don't want to compromise on Jupa, that's what is happening now inside the Zou. There are some things I can, you have to forgive me, there are some things I cannot make public. It's classified information for now, but it will be released, I assure you. Call it against me if I don't, but I will at the right time. Regarding membership, I stand to correct you that we are all IPOB, everybody is. Everybody is an indigenous person of Biafra. Collectively, we are indigenous people of so you end automatic entry into IPOB. But the thing is that there are some things you have to go through when you come into the movement. What it means is that there is this body of nation called IPOB with a group of people are pushing forward pilotically, a movement towards freedom. If you want to leave the ground and come in the one of those at the front, pulling everybody together, it takes something. You have to be under oath. And let me tell you what the oath does. You will not betray us. That is number one. If not for the oath we are under in IPOB, by now our enemies have destroyed us completely. I'm telling you. With arrest after arrest, killing after killing, we are still marching forward. Because we are under sacred oath to restore Biafra or we die destroying Biafra. Anybody, don't play this way. Anybody who doesn't want to come forward to join IPOB, I have reason to question that person's character. I'm, I'm on the end. Thank you.
Uh, the coordinator of Montreal just informed me. They'll be driving all the way back to Montreal and up to fifteen, I think. And so we're looking at time also. Uh, the number of questions we could take, I think it's rude working out on Hamadike. So, um, just bear that in mind. So one of the way you can help us is ask a question with just one question, not multiple questions. And at some point, we will have to review the number of people. Um, but for now, I'm gonna call on Kenny. He's the proprietor GBKMFM, a radio station here, to ask this question. Just say, be here, man.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be in this conference today. I've learned a lot. Uh, my question, I'm gonna be brief. If given the opportunity, will you be willing to sit with Nigeria on the right table for this discussion, given what the, uh, the Biafra has got to? Thank you. As long as that discussion is, uh, agree where the boundaries will be, then I'm okay to go.
Um, next person is Tina Taker.
IPOB?
Oyebi!
Good afternoon. I'm so privileged to see you today physically. Uh, my name is Tina Taker and I'm from English Cameroon. Sir, may you live long and may Biafra have their independence. I want to say that from a very young age, I remember my grandfather telling me that during the Biafra war, a lot of Ibo people came into English Cameroon, Amazonia, and we were by their side. In fact, I grew up, went to school, I have Ibo classmates, we have Ibo market, we have Ibo quarter. My question that is pushing me to talk to you today, sir, when our leaders came to Nigeria to plan, because we realized that all the democracy from these white people is fake democracy. So we decided to take our destiny by force. Because independence, you cannot wait for people to give you independence, you take it by force. That is what we are doing right now. And our own stupid, stupid, I don't know how to qualify him, animal of a president, his own means. Because even the most little children know their identity. They are happy to tell you at any second of the day, I am an Amazonian, I am no longer a Cameroonian. That is what I am missing in our Biafra community. Most of us in there, in this country, we have used IPOB to take our something, to collect our something in our pocket. It's IPOB. They probably will call for a meeting, they are not here. So as Afrika, I am feeling like we are losing it. Mister Bouari, no, not Mister. To believe what I don't know. This fool, Nia Usa, he had the audacity to catch our leaders and send them back into Cameroon. So what are you thinking? What are you thinking about Amazonia? I, 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 sometimes I think, I want to know your thoughts, sir. I want to know your thoughts because I know that you are in this field for a long time. I think the first thing we need to do right from home, because from Canada or the TV, I can watch your, 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 your speeches. I can be inspired, I know who I am, I know what I stand for. But what are we teaching the new children at home? I think we should start by telling these children who they are, because I think the major has brainwash them to forget that these are Biafa children. Biafa has suffered a lot. You people have lost a lot to even have a low-born attitude. We need to take the independence by force. That is my opinion.
Do I need to respond to that?
Yes.
I think it's very clear, isn't it? I'm actually very happy, maybe I should, um, take permission from my wife to take her with me wherever I go. So she will be speaking to people. When I go, she will talk to our people. We don't know the meaning of freedom, we don't understand it. We think because we fought a war and lost, because of that we should be slaves forever. That was the attitude of the slaves they brought to this part of the world. That is the reason why a black African is the only domesticated animal in the history of humanity. It's the truth, you may not like it, but it's the truth. Only an African man allowed himself to be trained like a farm animal because he loved dignity and honor. To appreciate that some things are better than life itself. My dear sister, I am part and parcel of the Amazonian movement all the way from London, I have spoken to some of your leaders. But, um, I'm going to do a program in Chicago. And a lot to be revealed. Somebody mentioned, um, Niger Delta South South. They went and duped the Amazonians, took money from them and did nothing. I was expecting them to rise up and campaign for the release of the leaders of Amazonia when Zou captured them. The mistake that they made from Amazonia was to travel to the northern part of the Zou. They should have come to Biafra land. Real protection would have been provided for. I have spoken to their leaders, as I said. And they are part and parcel of what we are trying to accomplish. That nations must emerge from the colonial contraptions built by the Europeans. Because some of you don't know one simple logic. When I give you a name, I control you. That was why Muhammad Ali changed his name from Cassius Clay to Muhammad Ali. Most of the very conscious African Americans, when they were freed as slaves, took up African names or took up not African names, but should I say Islamic names. The fact that a white man created Nigeria, listen carefully, makes you his property forever and ever. As long as you preserve that name, Nigerian, you are lower than an animal. Simple logic. Common sense. Look at India. After their independence, they changed the names of their cities to what they owe it to be. You're telling me that a white man can come from Europe, go to Africa and say, "You, you, 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 you from today, your name is Nigeria." And you stupidly and foolishly stand up to say, "I'm a proud Nigerian." There's something wrong with your brain. Half of your white people are indigenous. I said half. You were born and make a very strong nation. And you were born in a little nation. Why are you fighting and dying for the boundaries drawn by a white man, a Muslim? That shows you're inferior. And that is what Biafra has come to change. They may not like it. But it is going to happen. Biafra is going to be free. And Amazonia will be free as well.
My apologies to Ekech Kudich here. Actually, it was an oversight. Can you please answer your question?
IPOB.
One Family.
IPOB.
One Family.
My question is this. Marzen Mauka Cabo Work coming to Canada. I want to know what you are doing to tell some of our youths to tone down their voices on social media. We have some genuine Eurobar people who really want us to have our independence. But some of our youths are very, very vulgar. They will attack you when you ask them simple question. They will insult you. I have misses that are Eurobars. My senior sister is married to an American from those states. I could not see myself insulting. We, we should play, apply what is called diplomatic intellectual debate. Fight with Eurobars intellectually, not being insulting. I've seen two Eurobars here that are supporting our cause. What are you doing to tell our youths to take it easy? I've tried to speak to some of them. They will call me Sabotwa. Call your own names. We, we saw no files here, very highly, FFK. Young man, two guys that came to see before the criminal activity of FFK. We have a genuine Eurobar who are supporting us, who are ready to give us. Who are ready to support us. What are you doing to tell our youths to take it easy?
IPOB. I have to say that maybe they learned it from me. Because we confront fire with even a bigger fire. We know there are good Eurobar people. I have not said this in public before, but I will say it today here in Canada because you're a distinguished audience, I must say. IPOB attended the last birthday of Ayah Debanjo. I will give him a gift. We acknowledge genuine Eurobar leaders who are consistent. Consistent. We banter sometimes. You know, when Eurobars, some of them say, "We are Biafra," you don't expect them to be quiet. They'll go after them. And I hope that one day we'll be very good neighbors with the Eurobars. Because we have a lot to share together. In Oduduwa and also in Biafra, but not in Nigeria. Are you following me?
Yes.
Yes, not in Nigeria. You know, in the Bible, Abraham said to Lot, "We have the same blood." That your goat is eating the grass of my sheep. And my calf is eating the grass of your other little calf. So to avoid problem, eh? Don't cry to him, then he go the wrong way. FFK is my, is my in-law. Ayah Fajashet is a darling of Biafra if you add order with her. But this IPOB has been trained to be vicious. Because we don't know where our enemies are coming from. So the best way of defense is to...
Thank you, Nigeria. Thank you for starting Emmanuel Anunsho there, please. Starting Emmanuel Anunsho.
Thank you, Obama Littie. Thank you for your efforts, you have made so far to restore Biafra. As one of the Biafran soldiers during that time, I understand Biafa that the House of Fulani did not defeat Biafra. Through the conventional law. But, and that was why they invented divisive myths. And that was what we watched defeated Biafra. And we call it Sabotwa. Now, they have started again to use that system to fight Biafra by dividing up. My question is this. What are you doing, or what are we doing to unite each and every group, Biafran group? Because I know that there are many. And through what I am seeing in social media, I don't think there is unity among them. So my question is, what are we doing to unite them? Because we are fighting a common enemy. And when we are united to fight this common enemy, within couple of weeks, they are defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. He said there are many pro-Biafra groups. And I'm sure by next week, maybe might have another four join the existing rounds. There is something that is wrong with us, which we must cure ourselves of. You know, we come from a very competitive culture. Where if I hear that you're in car importing business, I join. Is that correct?
Yes.
So when people come and say they are praying for Namdekan of Fuchan, they fought for IPOB. There are people who want to also pray for them. Eh? And if by starting a pro-Biafra group is the way to accomplish that, then so be it. What is the motive of this people? Where are we going to stop? You have four people drinking in a Biafa. They contribute money, maybe 4,600 naira. They see a journalist with a dreamscape walking in. I did not pay them. And you call the journalist and you add up the 4,500, you give him 4,000. Say, "Please write press statement. We are calling for this and we are calling for that. Our name is Biafra Liberation Council." And they write. And then you think there is a new pro-Biafra group, or some propaganda, no, four, four. Are you following what I'm saying? Everybody is important, yes. But IPOB is political. We are uncompromising. Can you live with that discipline? That is the issue. We don't want you to come in, as some people have done. I mention their names on Radio Biafra and the next day, they receive a lance as a tactical rubbish. That's why I don't pray for them anymore. Because I pray somebody and they go and collect money, start to talk nonsense. There are no pro-Biafran groups. It's a bunch of people online with fake accounts talking rubbish. If you say you're a pro-Biafran group, who is your leader? Let that leader come to Canada. Let me see people who pray to see him or her. Are you following what I'm saying?
Yes.
If you're a pro-Biafran group, what have you done? Is it pro-Biafran on Facebook? How are you pro-Biafran on Facebook? We are dying on the ground. We are fighting for an respect. On the ground, what have you done? As a pro-Biafran group, I ask. If not to be informant to the Zulu. That is why we are formidable. That is why we are unbreakable. IPOB is unbreakable. When we say "One Family," we mean it. IPOB!
One Family!
I don't know whether people read a passage or statement. He said that Nigeria is being Fulanized and Islamized. But he did say something. He said, "The only people, the only people that are prepared and seem to be safe is the eastern Nigeria." And why is that? Because we have soldiers on the ground. You people don't know what we do. But every vigilante is less than IPOB people. And when the Fulanists come to any community, there are people there waiting for them. So we are protecting them. The next person is Etel Obi Ezekiah. Etel Obi Ezekiah.
IPOB.
One Family.
IPOB.
One Family.
I'm privileged to see you in person today, Amadike. My question this evening is, like the last speaker said, the previous one, said, we have, we have a lot of suffer to us. And my question is, we have all these governors in the east. What are we going to do to them so that this cause of Biafra will be achieved? Most of the governors that you have were planted by the Fulanic caliphs to serve them. And that move started since 1976. Mbappe was an operation. They missed him and Wobu there. But you see, over the years, they managed to get Wobu as well. Only Mbappe is too wish very firm to be there, which is why we should always honor him. Because he's a good man. He fought in the Biafran war, he was a governor. You can see the love of his people flowing through you. All these charts you are seeing. Go post on them, man. 419, they get us. 200, they take off. You don't know that before? Or is it that a woman, a highway robber, in Biafa? These are the people that are preaching for you to abuse your governors. If he wants to be governor, I can take him to the north. He will do that and then they lie down for one smelly idiot, illiterate. And they talk about it. They carry up a sheet and they sit down. And they say, "He's an Igbo leader." That's how the leaders emerge. A blue, a red cap. And with, yeah, what is taken and honored by the believing. And if he dare, you have an Igbo leader. When Fulani are attacking his village, and you ask him, what do you have to say? He will say, "We should not do anything to disturb the peace." These governors, we are going to do to them exactly what Mossad did to Nazi officers. Go and read the text books you read, see what happened there. There will be no forgiveness. They can do every amount of strategy and saboteur like. They can never stop Biafra from coming. And when Biafra comes, they will not only pray for it, their families will pray, and there will be no pity. Oh, so you think they will kill us in the fall? Massacre us in a van, and then we forgive everybody like that? Keep on nonsense. We won't forgive anybody.
Amadike, the first time you came, really your first missionary journey, there's a man called Uche Zuma, Uche Mami. He hosted you in his house and you broadcast for seven days. Uche is here today. You asked after him when we were at the hotel. He said, "Where is my friend Uche?" And he wants to ask you a question, Uche.
Uche Zuma, how are you doing? We are nowhere like this. Just one man to us. To his friend. You've been to his friend for a while. Just, you might not share with anyone, whatever we are operating to do. We know that you have a, we used to have a defense force. Is this still on? Because lately, we've not had any advance. And they are serious. There are areas that, I wanted to, I wanted to say, I'm not even touched on the problem. Because you have people living to defeat both of us. They make our trances in Apucha, and there is no repercussion. And what are we doing about that? And how are we going to checkmate this people? And I want to get an answer. And precisely, this is what.
Thank you very much, Uche. When I was in Canada last time, I can't leave hostel, maybe it's beautiful wife and children. And when I came into Canada, I asked after him. Yeah, you know some man, Maga, you were a boy. I will answer your question this way. You know, evil men gossip a lot. Evil men gossip more than the women. And that is why, every meeting, every evil meeting in the war, headed by a man, they have a faction inside it. They check all the women groups all over the world, they are one and intact. If our mothers, we are gossiping in nineteen twenty-nine, they would have fought the white man in Abba. Because the men, Agan Neban and Cass, we do rubbish, do not, Ahmadike. Uche is a good friend of mine. And I hope he has not fallen victim to gossip. Come here to get help, people. Defense Fund, Defense Fund, how many of you here paid Defense Fund? There's a hand up. So, people are asking me for Defense Fund in Canada, we are only one person paid. How much you pay?
I pay three fifty, somebody here, I pay four fifty.
That's me.
How much on the wire, four fifty, I pay three fifty.
You expect? That's stupid. Oh, say to go. But if you're living about the Defense Fund, you will think the whole world contributed. They asked me about our transmitter. Uche, my dear brother, he's an Omaian. And I told them about the transmitter, and today the transmitter is in Abuja, with DSS. The reason why those that feed Uche gossip do that is because they want me to reveal the source of our strength, that our enemies may know. Don't do that. So if I come here, the way I would normally have behaved before, to say, oh, this is our Defense Fund, it's in this account, it's this much, then the zoo will not only look for it, it will calculate the amount of weapons we can buy with it, and they will buy four times that amount to wait for us. Simple common sense. I don't want to embarrass our people by telling the world how much is the Defense Fund. Yeah, you know, to be honest with you, so it's embarrassing to actually say it. And all those people that gossip to you, ask them to produce their receipts with which they paid Defense Fund, the answer is zero, they never paid. But because we love gossiping, we work in evil, and I go go now. Do, Uche, you know why they asked you about the Defense Fund? You know why? They want to discourage you from contributing towards IPOB. If they poison your mind, you will stop contributing, this movement will collapse. And then they will say, oh, we told you, they cannot get you Biafra. But I know them very well. Because if you mess up in IPOB, I will dismiss you, never to come back. Highest thing, it passed you for two weeks and I think you're trying to happen, it is about two weeks. Or eight days gonna last, I miss eight days. The same people that leaked, stole my phone and published the video of me and my beautiful wife. Thinking that people will hate me, people there started posting pictures of themselves and their wives, out of their own way. Stop listening to gossip. And where you go, go, gossip is for people without plan and without any projects. We are IPOB. Anything I say I'm going to do, I do it. Do you think Israel will take me seriously if I come out to say to the world, we have X, Y, Z amount of money in our Defense Fund? Do you know how many AMO cars that Canada has? AMO vehicles, do you know? No, do you know? AMO vehicles, again, you don't even know how much, but you want me to tell you how much you have in Defense Fund? Oh, now, I say, eh, you don't see, we get to India here. IPOB! I know war. I know war.
And the next person is Honorable Achar Comfrey. Over there, over there.
Thank you, Ehse Chikar. It's a pleasure having you here, Prince Nandikano. You're a very smart student of history. I know that in every struggle, there are stages. So, what is a stage of this struggle at this moment? And you know that the most powerful weapon in the world is hunger. I just got back last night from my PhD. And hunger is driving our people into the camp of our enemies. The youth, they are losing the steam of IPOB struggle because they are hungry. At this stage, I expect IPOB to start formulating economic policies that will not make our youth depend on the crumbs coming from these dirty governors. I expect at this moment that IPOB will be doing what we're doing before the Biafra government finding our oil, having robust healthcare system. At this time, I would also like to suggest, let us bring back tells by Moonlight. The younger generation, they do not understand much about what you're doing. Let us bring back tells by Moonlight, before they go to bed, we will read them stories, we will gather around the fire and tell them what you are doing. This is how this struggle will go to the next level, I'll get you a book of it, thank you.
He said that people are hungry and what are we doing about it? My dear brother, I will come to question that. I went to Israel. As part of the negotiations and discussions with certain people in Israel, we are ranging to get our people, our young people, meaningfully employed back home by becoming the food basket of not just Biafra land or the wider zoo that our neighbors, but the whole of West Africa. I went to Israel and negotiated, I came on radio and announced it, that we need farmland to start doing some very wonderful things. You know what they did? For those asking me about Defense Fund, ordinary agriculture. Not Defense Fund, ordinary, and they got on, they plant tomatoes. And I know, but near all these little, little things. Okay, see, Basu went and visited the Israeli. It's, um, okay, see, Basu went to Israeli embassy to say, why are you discussing with that terrorist? When you can partner with Abia? Are you listening?
Yes.
Because any announcement I make in the public, the zoo will send one of their idiots to go and work against it. That is why we don't announce everything in public anymore. Understand this very well. And since that time, I don't care, see, Basu went to Israeli embassy, has anything happened in Abia? It's just a point. He asked me the phase we are reading right now. And I call it the phase of gathering. Not in the Pentecostal church saints, please. This very seed that was planted in twenty twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, through my incarceration and all we've been through, now we are gathering people together to assign roles and duties, to go into their next phase. If we can get people here in this hall to mob them, to protest, to rally, to disturb the authorities in this very Canada, then we would have gone a long way. But if you do nothing here, nothing is going to happen. Understand this very well. And regarding tales by Moonlight, I'm sure that if we are running around the fire and discussing, Dave Rumahin will send the army to go and kill Africa, that's the problem. Then we have to take care of their kids, or even the kids, we have to bury them, we have to take care of everybody, and it costs money. And then somebody will come on air and ask me, all that dues we are paying, what are we doing with it? But now that people are in prison, nobody is asking me how we got to bring them out. Nobody is asking me how do we sustain each of all and each group to do their work. IPOB!
Next person is Anna Yonkoko Re. IPOB, IPOB. Ahmadike. Now you see, you live in city. Lanora. Uh, every one of us here today, if I'm speaking the minds of everybody, I'd like us to keep on fighting, we are behind you. My question is this. During your incarceration in Nigeria, and let me make this clear, the fear of Nandikano is the beginning of wisdom for Bukhari. Bukhari went on, well, Bukhari there, went on his knees. I believe there must have been some efforts to meet with you. Because I tell you that we are scared, and they are still scared. Was there at any point? And this is a follow-up to a question somebody asked before about negotiation, was there at any point that, you know, the Bukhari or his agents uh, met with you? And if they did, were there conditions that they gave you that you refused? Very respectful question, thank you.
Yes, um, various occasions that sent people to me. And I said before I speak to them, I get also given my conditions, which I know they couldn't meet, is not possible for them to meet it, and I didn't give them any. I didn't want to speak to them. They sent Rogers of Calo to come to me. First to my parents. My father said no, my mother said no. That where I stand is where they stand, in life or in death. They came to prison, I was prompt, even from DSS dungeon, they promised us killing, the vice president, anything you want. You have a very beautiful wife, you better go and enjoy her in prison. Anything you want. And I said no, that what I want is a referendum, to determine if you good people want to be part of the zoo or part of Nigeria, or part of Biafra, choose one, zoo or Biafra. They said no. And, see, Basu tried to make contact when I came out. I don't know if I've told this story before, actually. And Anesha rejected it, I went to see Mia Wodde in his house, we sat down, had lunch together. And I told him what my conditions were to lift the boycott in the number states which they couldn't meet. And I said to Wodde very simply, go to Abuja and tell these people that these are what our people are asking for. I said to him, go and bring us something, not for me, for everybody. He went there and started negotiating for a certain position, for one of the children. I'm telling you what I mean, it's fact, ask him. Somebody asked him, but you people are being called to Assorok because of Nandikano, why didn't you tell him that you're going to Assorok? He said it is for evil leaders. And once the governors that be knew that he hadn't IPOB support, they just gave them five million naira for transport and dismissed them. Hadn't Mia Wodde remain with me? When the governors called me, I told them the same thing in front of Professor Benwabense. They said, bro, that Wodde, Saludo, eh, Ebramadi's upstairs, do you want him to come? I said, no. Government's house, they will. The former DSS director talking with his banks of money, in euros, in white sacks, to bribe, ask anybody working in the government house, me. I said, no, I don't want to see them. Not because I want to be the only God growing, no. Because of consistency. Can you last? When you're tempted, are you going to succumb? Can you sustain? These very efforts were made for me, so they have come. And I gave them my conditions, which they can never meet. Open Boris Seaport, open the Ibota Seaport, open the Carabas Seaport, make any good international airports where we can fly to US and come in that way. Build the Ibota, any good, Onisha, any good express road. Complete Second Niger Bridge. Are these things difficult?
No.
As I'm telling you, this guy asked them, you know, Assorok, if you have friends there, they have the piece of paper I left them. They ran away. Because some evil men were busy gossiping. Saying if you allow him, when he finishes fighting Nigeria, he will come here, fight us and kill all of us. That's what they said. And you know one other thing they said? They told every evil pioneer around the world that nobody should give me one gun. Ask them, that if you give Nandikano money, he will go and buy weapons. That nobody should give me anything. I'm going to hear in Agabia. That we are here, but the greatest event is not backing off our strength, to be honest with you. Any day we are seen as the world, or no? How do you want Canada to regard the Biafra, the friend them, or even USA? The people that the ambassador knows are the governors, or maybe, uh, Anesee. Did you people not hear that British government went to Biafra and then was arrested? Oh, my goodness. Their British high commissioner was stalling everywhere. When they wanted to kill me. One that wanted to kill me, went to Pio Vonit and asked him, what do we do to Nnamdi Kano? That one said, you can kill him if you want. They went to his ear and to say to him, you can never touch him. If you touch him, he's just a poor. How many times has the US government been to Enugu? They go to Ohanese. I saw, I don't want to say. They went to Ohanese and the governor, they asked them, what do you want? Oh, leave those rascals, leave them. Leave the ants. We want restructuring. What they're asking for is untenable. But the same man said, if there is no restructuring, they'll join IPOB to do Biafra, isn't it? Did he complete what he said? Is he doing what he said he's going to do? And you want me to walk with these people? I say, everything I do, I say it to the open. Imagine me put that word, not gossip. And those that spoke to Ujai, I am going to Tugbo to broadcast life to the whole world. And tell them they're in trouble. I've told them in Nyanaya, every time they contributed to IPOB, they announced on the world to hear. Tell them, there will be no hiding place for gossipers. Even as much as I'm concerned. Because I know what I've committed to this very movement. Not that I've become Biafra president, no. So that I can take Nebeka and then he came back to the land of his ancestors. To this, that same land that Chukogba Gabbah and I said, you people must be here. And then my Bajakamamalia. And I'm fighting for Biafra to be free. Thank you.
It was just uh, last week that Nnamwod was responding to 100 billion giving to the Flannihousmen. And he said, these people go around with their guns, killing people. And he didn't do anything. He turned around, unless civilians are not covering their faces, they're just agitating for a referendum. You call them terrorists. Isn't he a wailers or lamentations? They're just thinking out loud. This man understands that our, the Biafrans are divided. I used to tell someone, I said, the very first day they saw Ohamadike, his senators drove into the east. The whole Nigeria nearly had a heart attack. Because this young man here, for the first time, got the senators and all the powers in the east pocket. That's what they don't want to see. And they ended up near a killing. Because it's the person that is driving the Biafrans to where they should be. But like he always said, we are wrestled who we continue to march for. IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
The next question is coming from Chigose Akobata, are you here?
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
Now you have Ohamadike garden. We don't get ready. Chukoga goes again. You take a new lane. Chukoga Dama, Daba Gomen. He said, my question is this. When I came here, I was marveled, looking at people gathering over here for the purpose of IPOB. And the people of Biafra. I want to ask you, if we live here, are you committed? You are asking the spirit leader this question over and over for hours and asking the question. Now I want to throw this question to the floor here. Look at me, everyone. See, let me tell you, I know where I came from, you know my name? Only few of you can even know me. On September 2017, when the happening, did that happening, happening and I adjust it. I can recall my board over there. Obasi. And Timbukafu. A minute ninety, um, the era. So we gathered together under one IPOB. But that makes me to know we have any IPOB. That we are still talking about today. I want to know this division as Igbo we hesitate. But Igbo we hesitate. But now I only do bonus, Igbo we make it in, Igbo we hesitate. But Igbo we hesitate. My question is, I asked it before, if we live now, we pay that 20 dollars, see that is too much. We pay the 20 dollars, see that is too small. Could you believe that this number of people here will pay 20 dollars every month just for a sacrifice? Do you know what it will deserve for this IPOB in Canada? We went to Orawa. I have it here. The reason I didn't display it was the time that I got great people on social media. My wife was there. The house was like 200 people. But when they go, came to go to Orawa for protest, everybody disappeared. And we are gathered here, we are IPOB. Where do you belong to? Show example and let's lead, God bless you.
Ohamadike, uh, there's one of us. He has some artistic art. And there's a very unique picture he would like to present to you. That was a picture where you were in court. And I'm calling on Frank, who is the please. Will you come for me, please? IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
One family.
IPOB.
Ohamadike, I'm happy to see you today. I thank you for what you have been doing for us and what you continue doing for us. Keep blessing you. I have something for you. And this thing I'm giving you, when I look at this picture, it inspires me a lot. Thank you so much. What is written there is, the lion of Biafra roars in the courts. You cannot accuse me in the open and try me in secret. You cannot be killing my people and want to try me in secret, you are mad.
As we take the next question, Ohamadike, they run, uh, Orawa family. It's like four hours from here, that's the capital of Canada. They were not able to be with us yesterday, but they are today. If you don't mind, they'd like to take a piece of you back to Orawa. Orawa people, can you please come here?
IPOB.
One family. One family. Can you people come closer that the picture will be taken? So that when you go to Orawa, you tell them, eh, Ohamadike of Biafra. Thank you, Orawa people. God bless you. Saint Johnny, when you return, when you go show your families that you, Shukisan is a single man. When you see him, you think he's so aggressive. But he's really a very mellow guy. He told me that everybody that sacrificed their best very struggle must be recognized and that's what we're doing tonight. Let's just, gentlemen, we're going to be living here by 11. The police cruiser there and the security people, we'll be leaving by 11. So we are very close to the closing time. So, and we will take just very few questions. And I'm going to ask Doctor Chinling Wanyu for two minutes, please, not more than two minutes.
Ohamadike, um, I already told you how much respect I have for you. The problem, because I am one of the diehard believers in the Igbo community. We have done our best, we have sacrificed for our community. When I was the president of Nigerian Canadian Association here, and we are protesting against uh, the, 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 the ills that was going on. I went to about three organizations that were Biafra organizations. And I donated money in all of these places. My problem is this. I want you in the presence of Igbo people here this night to tell us who are the authentic and recognized group that you guys identify with. I want to hear it from your mouth. That's just what I want to see. Because every time we step out of here, before tomorrow, before tomorrow, you're going to see people popping. I was actually taking out of Nigerian Canadian group today because I was trying to post something and I was former president. And I know why they took me out, because of our very people here. So I want you to address our people. So that when you leave, we will know the people that we are, that when we are working with them, we know that they are transmitting to you directly. Thank you very much.
Transmission, transmission.
IPOB.
One family.
It is very, very distressing that our brother who is the, uh, who was the immediate past president of Zoo Group here. You know, we have the lives of Okora Owasa and all the rest of them. There is also some Okora Owasas in Canada. You will have them everywhere. They are to me as the UK Brits. And they're not sometime in the past. So they'll be there always. But in terms of, can you stand up for our team? That's our coordinator, Neil of Canada. And where is our, that is the Ontario coordinator as well. There is also our general secretary. If you want to deal with IPOB in Canada, these are the people you be dealing with. If you're dealing with them, then you're dealing with me. Anything outside team is not authentic. Please, understand this very, very clear. And our people who are here. Sometimes it's becoming very, very embarrassing the way some of us in here, to be honest. Very embarrassing. The progress of our people is the responsibility of each and every one of us here. Sometimes I put an obi to a culture watching after the liberation and the breaking of Koranot. Some of you don't know that sharing of Koranot is an oath. Do you know that?
Yes.
I want to go. People don't understand it. The reason why you give somebody Koranot in your house, you break and you eat, is that to reassure that person that no hand can befall you nor her, that your hands are clean. But we turn our culture upside down, maybe because I grew up in the village. We never stand up on a town, we don't a town. Because if you grow up in the village, you understand the meaning of camaraderie. Working with people and trying to deliver a particular goal and result. Those that grew up in the township, Hachlewe. I have all the Haga Bate. I want to see Legos for the Manya Canada. I want us to turn a new leaf. Very it is said that IPOB came into Canada and we became a new people. Because the story of Biafra and IPOB will not be complete with what I've seen today, without Canada in it. And that means that all of you will participate. Some of you think that when Biafran comes, maybe it will be leadership only. Nobody who is a leader in IPOB will serve when Biafran comes. Biafran people will elect people that will serve them. One was asking me, what is your structure? It's my structure, what? I said, what is your structure? We are here to serve you and you are here to also serve Biafran. IPOB.
One family.
We will be moving faster. And there are people, family members that were not in our meeting yesterday, like Prince, like Martin, can you please come forward? Uh, Ohamadike, we just take a quick picture with you and then we make closing remarks and then go. While that is going on, I want to remind you, there are people that have been coming to us and will be giving the letters for immigration. All of them are successful. Even though Nigerian government say that IPOB is a terrorist organization, Canada said no. They do recognize that people are running away from being hurt by oppressive government. What we do not want is people coming to beg us, we are under oath not to abuse those letters that we sent to government. If you are not a member of IPOB, we will not give you a letter. So if you want to join IPOB, if you're not an IPOB member before, once you set your foot in Canada, you go and register with their closest IPOB office, the nearest province. Are they ready, Martin? Are they ready? Yes. Come on, come, come, wait one second, that's it. Ohamadike, please. Hey, Tom. No, please, 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 I don't want to end. Okay, that's it. Thank you guys, thank you guys, that's it, uh, quick, go. Thank you guys, it's okay, Ohamadike, we're good. No, 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 it's okay, it's okay, please.
Teamwork, teamwork. Please, you've taken pictures yesterday, why are you getting on the pictures again?
Guys.
Can you people see that we do the picture session, please, it's okay.
Can you people see that we do the picture session, please, it's okay. We wish you, Ohamadike, please, to want to sit down, very well. Thank you, please, thank you. Thank you, Ohamadike, please.
Uh, people must not, and I get what time for pictures, please. I get what time I release a picture.
The next item on the program is closing prayers. Ohamadike, people, they're closing.
Um, may we all stand, please? Heavenly Father, most precious God, Elohim, Adonai, Yeshua, the beginning and the end, the architect of our lives. We thank you for a very successful day. We thank you, Elohim, for the gathering of your children. And we pray that not only will IPOB be sustained by these your children here in Canada today, but that through their efforts, your promised land, Biafran, will restore. We ask you to guide them one after the other. These are your children that I pray for seven times every day. This Nogu family, that as you gathered us here today, so shall we return safely to our respective homes. Nothing untoward shall be found. Your blessing that we are taking away from here will guide and lead us as we turn a new league, as we all become freedom fighters for Biafran. Then your will may be done for our lives and glory unto your holy name. Now and forevermore, we pray. He say, he say, he say. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.